Well, good afternoon and welcome to today's work session. Today is Monday, May the 22nd, 2023, at nine till 3:00 P. M.
Mayor, if you'll give us one second, we're just waiting for the Zoom to start, I apologize.
Okay.
Donna should be starting it here in a second. She's been acting her up.
Yeah.
Okay. There it goes.
Recording in progress.
Okay, we're good to go.
Okay, today is Monday, May the 26th, 2023, at nine till 3:00 P. M. A work session of the City Council. Alloped order through Zoom as well as in person, and we have the following items for consideration, the City Council. Item one, Main Street applicant's interviews. Item two, Greenway Foundation update. Item three, legislative overview by Michael Beasley. Item four, Karen Wolf, Landscape and Project Coordinator, she'll talk about trees. We have number five, River Projects update, Karen Wolf, Landscape and Project Coordinator there. And item six is first quarter marijuana allocations. So let's go ahead and get started with item one, Main Street applicant's interview. Mr. Ruder, you had some information on?
Mr. Ray, I believe we have three applicants today to interview, and there are two vacancies. And just so everybody knows, I'll read the remainder members of who are on the Main Street Board currently. That would be Kimberly Schultz, Lynette Bordeaux, Karen Anello, Lee Elliott Lopez, and Krista Franks.
Okay. Well, the first person that we have to interview is Megan Creach.
Hello. I have a swer.
Thank you.
I have everybody. I wasn't sure if I should have emailed this and just brought some.
And Mayor, we'd like to keep each interview maybe five to 10 minutes.
Sounds good, sounds good, so you're keeping time?
Yeah, I will keep time.
All right, so you've got five minutes to.
Okay.
Tell us what you know or what you want to do.
Well.
Any questions?
First off, public speaking makes me nervous, so please excuse me. I'm just gonna read what I wrote here. I am submitting the letter of intent to the Corazon de Trinidad Historic Main Street Board. I've been a resident of Trinidad since January of 2021, but my family has been in this area for hundreds of years. My family has been active community members and entrepreneurs in Trinidad going as far back as George and Juana Simpson, and more recently, my great uncle, Fidel Martinez, who owned and operated a barbershop on Main Street. I currently manage Mutiny Trinidad at 135 East Main Street. I'm in negotiations to take ownership of that business from the current out-of-town owners. Mutiny Trinidad plays an integral role in our community as a safe and welcoming space for marginalized groups, especially the LGBTQIA2S community and people of color. This inclusive approach has created a supportive environment for people to connect with one another and build relationships in community. We provide a much-needed space for young people to gather and socialize in a safe and supervised environment. We host all ages events to keep the children and young adults in the community safe and engaged while having fun. Mutiny Trinidad also provides a much-needed free space for business and recreational group meetings. We have ample seating and provide free wireless internet for locals and rare travelers alike. In addition to our community impact, this shop supports local artisans and makers by showcasing their products. We partner with local Baker for fresh and organic pastries, local Eke Farm, and local Mushroom Farm. We provide retail space for local artists and to sell their creations without taking a commission. We also produce our own artisanal product in our house roasted coffee. Through Mutiny Trinidad and my own community outreach, I'm committed to being part of the restoration and revitalization of our historic Main Street District and Trinidad as a whole. I ask to be appointed to the Corazon de Trinidad Historic Main Street Board. I believe I will be an asset to this board and its commitment to Trinidad's beautiful and vibrant historic Main Street District. Thank you for your consideration.
If you have any questions, you can ask.
If you're appointed to the Main Street Board, what would you like to see accomplished in, let's say, the next 12 months?
Um, I know that there are lots of lots of things that the Main Street Board has purview of. I particularly, as a soon-to-be-a-business-owner-on-MainStreet, am very interested in the the different reasons that brings people to Main Street, whether it's our local people coming in for an event or tourists coming in for an event, or just to shop and be in town and walk around. So I'd love to see some more, I'd love to see Main Street utilized more as a gathering place. I know it's the main thoroughfare, and it can be tricky with traffic, but I really do think that having more street events that close down the streets, or just having more open businesses for people to come and enjoy is going to be a focus, for sure.
What, what?
I'm sorry, that's it.
I was busy drinking my water. What, what skill set do you have that you think that you could bring to the board?
Um, as somebody who's been in the service industry for 20-plus years, I feel like I have a a good ability to just talk to people, I can be a person on the street to find out what other shop owners want, what our local population is into, or talking to the visitors to our city to see what they like about Trinidad, what they wish that they could see in Trinidad as well.
I, you answered pretty much the same question. Thank you for putting in for us.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for your interest. Do you have any background in writing grants, by any chance?
I, only the ones that I have applied for during this little adventure of trying to buy a business. So not professionally, no.
Are there any concepts that you think would be good for the revitalization of downtown?
Well, I know that this is something that the Main Street Board is already focusing on, is a, an idea of restoration. And more importantly, an idea of restoring Trinidad to what it was envisioned decades ago, before the last major bust and before the marijuana boom. What, what the city and people were thinking of it in the seventies, where it was gonna have a vibrant downtown district, a vibrant river walk. I think all of that is exactly what we're looking for, I think that it should I, I like that it is a historic district, I think that keeping Main Street and commercial looking as beautiful and historic as it does really does bring people to the area, I think that that is a I think that's a major part of it, is not changing it, just enhancing it. Thank you.
I don't know, further questions?
Okay.
You know, first of all, thank you for applying, we appreciate it. We need unique good people on all of our boards and commissions. The one thing that I look for is passion for what you're doing and your passion for the community. It's a good idea to listen to, you know, things that you'd like to do, but what do you see in the community that shortcomings that we have? Don't be afraid to say it, because we need to know.
So particularly for me and my business, one of our main focuses is on the use of Trinidad. We, I find that although there are lots of good programs, there's not great places for young people to just come and be young people, they don't, without any kind of agenda, but in a safe environment as opposed to a park or a parking lot. So that is one same thing that I see lacking, I also feel like Trinidad as a whole could be enhanced with trying to bring young families to the area, which I see when I speak to people who are passing through or have been here a few times, one of the main things that they say is that there there isn't enough there isn't enough stuff for their kids, or the schools aren't exactly what they're hoping for in the area. So I think that while focusing on all sorts of things, we should focus on our youth and bringing young people into town and keeping the young people who are already here in town. I feel like when people hit 18, 19, 20, they're out the door. So those are things that I think are important and would like to focus on.
So having something for the youth to do, there is some stuff to do, but what do you think that we could do for the kids to, for them to have something to do? What else besides, you know, we have the Little Leagues and that type of stuff, is there anything else that you can see?
I don't know off the top of my head exactly what that would look like beyond expanding what is currently happening, which a lot of things are. I, I don't, I don't know off the top of my head exact, exact examples to give you. But yeah, I just, I just know in talking to people that that is something that is lacking.
You know, I, I think that one of the things that we all see is the youth of today, they are so engrossed with television, their phones, and a lot, most of them seem to be happy at home with their phones, yes. So I think that concentrating on what to give them besides that, to get them out doing things.
Uh, some, one thing just came to mind, and this is something that I was discussing with who I believe it was a teacher from the college, but I had mentioned that I, I not only do we not see a lot of students in our shop, that is again, kind of geared towards young people, I don't see them in towns, like on Main Street. And one of the things that the teacher had mentioned is that their bus used to, the trolley used to bring kids from the college down to the downtown area, and it would run periodically. And that it doesn't do that anymore, so the kids aren't really making it past like McDonald's and habaneros. And so just, just something as simple as that, bringing the college students that we have into our town center would be great, that would give them shopping and give the shop owners more access to the people who are here in, in our town, so.
Any other questions? Ms. Creach, thank you very much, appreciate your time. Colleen Scheldrick?
Hi, Colleen, how are you? I also look at it really bad at hopes. Um, so I have something to read, if that's okay?
Sure.
So I just wanted to let you know, first of all, I own Gypsy Moon Kisses, Bath and Body Products, and I also own Peaceful Peaks Clamping, which is actually out in Boncarbo. And I've been here in Trinidad area for two years now. I'm a prior military, so we've been, I've been military for my whole 54 years of living. And my husband is retired military as well, so we decided to settle down here, and we, we love it, actually.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you. But the reason I would like to be a part of the historic Main District is because as a business owner in Trinidad, I've been firsthand, seen firsthand importance of preserving this beautiful town's rich history and unique character. I believe that this historic downtown is a vital part of this community, community's identity, and it is our responsibility to preserve it for future generations. Especially now coming here, I just, I feel like there's so much history, and I just wanna be like part of the history. So I'm very passionate about economic development, and I believe that is essential to the growth of the and prosperity of our community. By joining the Historic Main Street Board, I'm confident that I can help lead a movement that will not only preserve our town's historic character, but also stimulate economic development. I'm committed to working collaboratively with other board members and community stakeholders to identify and implement strategies that will strengthen this historic corridor. I believe by promoting the unique features and attractions of our downtown, we can attract new businesses and visitors to this community, thereby creating new economic opportunities for our residents. As a newcomer to this historic Main Street Board, I would be bringing a fresh perspective to the table, and my lack of experience may actually work in my favor, as I will be able to bring new ideas and innovative solutions to the board. Additionally, as a woman of color and a business owner, I would offer a unique perspective that may be underrepresented in a traditional community organizations. My experience as a business owner may also be valuable to the board, as you can, I can offer insight into the challenges and opportunities facing small business owners in the community. I have the ability to network and collaborate with other business owners, and may also be an asset in identifying implementing economic development strategies for the historic corridor. In short, my background is unique, and experience makes me an excellent candidate for Historic Main Street Board, and I can bring a new perspective and fresh ideas and a diverse voice for the board that can help strengthen and revitalize our historic downtown.
Great, questions?
I believe every Main Street Board should target design, organization, economic vitality, and promotion. Of those four, which one would you concentrate on first?
So economic.
Vitality?
Vitality, yeah.
Economic vitality.
Probably so, because we're, which would I, I think would be best to tackle first.
Your storefront's beautiful.
Thank you.
Have you read the, the mission statement for the Main Street Board?
I read it briefly.
Okay, so I thought there was an interesting statement in here. It says, "To strengthen our city through preservation-based economic development." What do you think that looks like?
I guess my thinking would be to preserve it basically the way it I guess the way that the town forefathers intended, but still to bring it up to date at the same time with new business and new people, new ideas, I believe, might help out a little bit with some, something new, I guess, here, I'm not sure exactly for sure.
Good answer.
Oh, really don't have any questions, but you know, you mentioned that economical development and that. What exactly would you wanna do to bring businesses here and stuff that would be something that would attract not just tourists, but the people that live here? That's kind of what we need, is some kind of businesses that are, you know, sufficient and that'll last during the winter and, and stuff like that, and I know boards like this may have some insight, because you're in business and stuff like that. What would you think that we really need to do to, to attract businesses here?
So, to be honest, when we looked for a house here, we were in Hawaii. So, and we found Trinidad basically almost like throwing a dart on the wall, because it's, it's two hours from our, our kids in Colorado Springs, they're military as well. And so we wanted to find something that was, that had what, everything we needed, as far as land, businesses and everything. The problem I see is that there's no way to know about Trinidad, I didn't even know Trinidad existed. We drove through here coming from Texas, and I still didn't know Trinidad existed. There's nothing really showing that Trinidad's like here, in my opinion. I think maybe like social, because of this time and age, I think something on social media is something that is needed, like for me, for my business, I'm on social media all the time. And, and I'm promoting like the space to create along with my business, plus my Peaceful Peaks, I do the same thing. And I'm having people tell me, I didn't even know Trinidad was, I never heard of Trinidad, you know, so that's I think the biggest thing is there's, because I feel like everybody's trying to make this an art district. I had no idea that this was, what was going on here first, until I see so much art happening here. But nobody knows, like I have people constantly contacting me online, and people don't know that this exists, really.
I think we're trying to correct that with our tourist board, we made some changes on that, added some people that wanna do that and, and bring things to light. But, you know, that's, takes time to get everything going.
Right, and I think, I think it's on the right track, for sure. Um, I think that I hear so much with everybody talking about reaching out with different ways, especially like I'm seeing with the space to create and stuff, it's like that is amazing, everything's going on there, everything is going on downtown. I personally think it's, it's really needed, and I think that it's, it's done well. Every time I've seen something, it looks really good, so yes.
Thank you.
Colleen, you've been in business for a little while now, what are some challenges that you're finding for small businesses in downtown?
I just think that to be seen, it's like you, you're there's not, well, number one, there's not really much signage for me, compared to obviously like Hawaii or like Japan where I came from. You're just not much signage, so you can't really get, be seen very well. Um, I see that, I see that for, for me, for a skincare business, I have repeat customers constantly, just like, like the coffee, and so, but it's just hard to get out there, it's such a small place with, to be seen. So it's like you have to go to social media to be seen, because like the, the traffic, people drive by and they're still saying that they don't even, they didn't even know we were here. And this, I've been here, been in that space since September, and they're like, we didn't even know y'all were there, and that's not just my business, it's the three next to me, that there's no way to see that and we're the first ones you see coming in from off the highway, and people still don't realize we're there.
What are the best days that you've had, like what have you been around?
So my best days, not too far after Christmas were some of my best days. I had great days before Christmas, like in November, but after Christmas, I mean, everybody needs to take a shower or bath, so. I mean, so I'm always doing, I'm always doing business, and I have a skincare line, the ladies love it, guys love it. So, I mean, I kind of don't really have too bad of a days, you know, so, which is really good, and I'm have, I'm crazy packed online, so I think that's been it. I mean, there's been some struggles, I've had some backlash for being here, and I'm trying to overcome it, so.
I'm so sorry for that.
That's, I mean, it's one of those things, because of being a, a military brat and traveling so much, it, it bothers me, but it doesn't bother me, because it's like, I feel it's childish, so I don't really care. But as far as being around so many different people, I'm used to that.
And so have festivals helped?
Yes, the festivals have helped. I don't see much business from the festivals, because everybody's so concerned with the festivals, which is what you want to do. I think if it was, if I were able to bring my business outside, and it was like something, you're, it would be better. But right now with the festivals, everybody's just like, oh, this is exciting, they're watching everything, they're not really coming in after, they kind of get in the car and leave. So, yeah.
Thank you.
I appreciate your comments on a lack of Trinidad's online digital footprint, and to Councilman Schu's point, I think it's something we are working on, and so that's a, I think that's offering a, a lot of hope and, you know, potential turnaround. Something struck me, I asked each person that applied for that board, you know, are, are we a destination city for whatever industry they're, and by and large, the answer was not yet. So I mean, it corroborates what you were saying. You have, and this is maybe an unfair question, do you have any ideas how you would work in with the mission of this board to work hand-in-hand with increasing visitation to Trinidad? I mean, do you have any ideas there?
Oh goodness. I have to think on it honestly, I really, not off the top of my head, I can't think of anything. I know like for my other business, it's, because it's an outdoor business, you know, basically I feel like Trinidad's a win for that, you know, it's like huge with recreation, I mean, I'm just getting tons of customers from that direction. But as far as with this board, I, I'd have to think about it honestly to answer you really well.
That's understandable, I, you appreciate your interest.
Yes, thank you.
And like I mentioned with the last lady, you know, in, you know, the passion that you have for what you need, what you wanna do, and look for that passion as well within this organization. I really appreciate your comments of, when I mean, saying what the shortfalls are. And like I said, that's how we grow, we need to recognize our shortfalls, and I thank you for, for mentioning that. You know, as a vet, you've been around the world, and you've seen a lot of other places and probably other communities this size, and of course, much larger. The last lady was saying that the youth need to be, have more to do, or allow them to do more. How can we fill that gap?
Wow. I, I think, in my opinion, because just the same as Megan said, we don't see youth walking around here at all. I have to get, my customers that come from the college see me online, they don't walk around here, I really do, have never seen a, too many children even walk around, I mean teenagers barely, you know, they're with their parents that are dragging them down here, basically. So I think, in my opinion, I mean it, it really needs to have something that's gonna be a draw, whether it's something like a trampoline park or something that's gonna bring them in to wanna stay here and wander, responsibly wander, I guess. We had, I mean, even in, in Japan, they, on the bases, we had skate parks that were, you know, for, for youth that could go to the, the the FRGs, which is the Family Readiness Groups, they were always trying to make sure that we could have something for the youth, because we don't want them going off into other parts of Okinawa and getting in trouble. So there was always something they were doing with sleep-ins or like community center activities that were in this, on, in, on base that were driven so that the children and teens could, could go to, even young adults, because we had a lot of the military that were 18 and 19. And so something that they could do, we have a lot of fairs, even in Japan, there was a lot of amazing fairs, and I was part of some of those. Just bringing in just like circus, those solays, kind of similar things, and things like that to bring them here into town to where it makes them want to hang out a little bit at a, at a coffee place or anywhere, because honestly, since I've been here, I didn't even know there were kids here. I mean, I, I didn't know, I, I've only seen it at the farmer's market when I was there, I see them there once in a while, but I don't see kids here at all.
Very interesting, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, one more, go ahead.
I just wanted to avail myself of this opportunity. You, you mentioned skate parks in Japan, potentially. And I'm, I'm just interested in this answer, are, are you aware of the skate park here by any chance? You are hoping, because I mean, it's, it's of, it's a really high caliber, and I think it's something that's underutilized. I mean, I know it relates nothing to the board that you've been on, but.
I, I think honestly, maybe the fact that they don't go so much is because they're scared off a little bit somehow by the community members feeling like they shouldn't be there, they shouldn't, they don't belong. And I saw somebody had painted over their, the graffiti that was on the skate park there. And I mean, personally, just coming from different places, the graffiti is part of skate parks. And so something like being able to let them maybe paint it and to be part of the community and make it theirs, because right now, they probably don't feel like it's theirs.
You know, the, the Main Street Board, you know, I think in past, has pretty much concentrated on, you know, like the tourism aspect of this downtown area, but like I said, you and Ms. Creach, you talked about the youth a little, you know, quite a bit. And in order for a community to look vibrant, you need to have all ages, you know, through your community and feel comfortable that they, they can walk downtown, they can do things, they feel comfortable, so I think that the, or I believe that the Main Street Group maybe So, I think that the, or I believe that the, um, Main Street group maybe needs to concentrate a combination of the youth as well as the tourism aspect of it. And of course, working with the other boards as well.
I agree.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we have Lauren Hoffman.
Hello.
Hi.
Mayor Rico, Trinidad City Council members and city staff. I come before you to express my interest in serving as a member of the Corazon de Trinidad Historic Main Street Board. Civic engagement is a very important value that I hold and getting involved with Trinidad is no exception. My vision and values are in strong alignment with the Corazon de Trinidad Historic Main Street Board's mission statement to lead a movement within our historic downtown corridors to strengthen our city through preservation-based economic development. Over the years, I've had the opportunity to deepen my role within community leadership and community building spheres. And I'd like to highlight a few experiences most relevant to my qualifications to sit on this board. First being I have experience serving in board and advisor capacities in nonprofit organizations to educational institutions and economic development initiatives. I currently serve as an advisor for the Ashoka Designated Changemaker Campus at the University of Evansville, which seeks to systematize innovation and collaboration to address both greater society and local communities' most pressing social, environmental, and economic challenges. I'm finishing up a, well, actually extending, I should say, a near four-year term, uh, stint as a board member with Creative Strategies for Change, which is an organization that seeks to mobilize art and education for social justice. And I also served on the Women's Entrepreneurship Council, uh, affiliation with the Downtown Economic Development Group in Denver. I'm an impact-focused business owner. I have three businesses. One is ten years with consulting. Uh, most recently, my work is situated in spatial design, experiential, and service design. Um, my second business located here, I have three properties in Trinidad. So, I have a vested interest in, um, historic preservation and have grown, grown an affinity for that. And the third is in, uh, the gaming space. Uh, so actually educating game designers and developers on how to create games, uh, through a different lens. Again, my, actually what drove my interest over the past, I would say, three to four years in historic preservation efforts began in Trinidad. I plan to apply for educational programs to increase my knowledge of, uh, world architecture and community development to uphold cultural and community identities. Uh, and lastly, I'd highlight, I am a cooperative investor with the Colorado Solidarity Fund, which seeks to invest in locally owned cooperative businesses to ensure their access to larger scale funding. So, when I think about my interest specifically in historic preservation, I think about a lot of the beautiful buildings that I know I encountered when I first drove through. And thinking to myself, these buildings are so much more than just brick and mortar. This is a story about ourselves, about our history, about our future, and is also the stories that other people tell about us. So, I think this is a really great opportunity to, um, I would say regain control of that narrative and really craft something that best represents the beautiful, rich history that we have here and also where we want to go. And I think the economic-based preservation is a great way to do that. Um, so I think what I could offer is, is listening. I think listen more than I talk and work in collaboration with the other boards. I see a lot of synergies between this board and tourism, this board and TURA, this board and, uh, the Corazon de Trinidad group, for example. I think there's a lot of really important synergies, again, that we could, uh, grow there. And most importantly, I think, is creating space that every voice matters here. Um, really upholding the legacy of families that have been here for generations and making sure at every step, they, they are integrated into the conversation and have, um, meaningful points in the dialogue as well.
Questions?
Ma'am, if, if appointed, how will you better utilize your, your skills and experience as, uh, being a business owner to benefit the Main Street Board?
Uh, as I mentioned, I have a vested interest. I own, uh, commercial real estate and growing here in southern Colorado and in northern New Mexico. Um, so for instance, um, I have experience with grant writing, um, and procuring funding. I think that could potentially be useful for the board. Past, you know, board and advisory roles, I think would allow me to kind of know the systems and ways of being on a board, uh, could be hopefully supportive. Um, but I think most importantly, I'm, I'm a dialogue facilitator. That's mostly what I do. So, even having contentious sometimes, um, conversations and being able to facilitate, uh, you know, difficult conversations with clarity and compassion and respect, I think is a really, uh, hopefully important opportunity.
Thank you.
That's probably a skill set that this counter could.
Everyone needs it. I'm still learning.
So, you've been on to the meetings for Historic Main Street?
I, I have attended one before.
Okay.
Specifically prior to learning there was a board seat available.
Okay. So, I was liaison to that board for several years. And it seemed like at that point, their focus was on events and, um, I never could quite figure out what their endgame was with doing that. Do you, do you, if you were appointed to this board, would you continue on that path? Or what would you do different? What, what does preservation-based economy mean to you?
Yeah, so from my understanding, Historic Main Street is kind of a national program. There's a playbook available. So, I think a beautiful thing is we don't have to reinvent the wheel. I think it's really understanding the components of the playbook and executing on those factors. So, I think that's a huge advantage we should lean into. Um, and as far as preservation-based economic development, uh, I think it's been alluded to before by Colita and Megan, but I think a first step is ensuring that the, the facades of the downtown and the storefronts actually communicate, "We are a vibrant city with, with retail opportunity, with shopping, with restaurants," right? And so, um, I know for instance, that, uh, a first step that they intend to move forward with is, um, creating partnerships with the business owners. So, not taking a heavy punitive hand, but really working alongside business owners to understand what grant funding is available, to support them in their storefront. Um, in addition to making sure that, you know, we, we're, we're more hands on along the way. It's not necessarily just procuring funding, redistributing, and, and kind of walking away. I think of an opportunity could be more engagement, more routine, not, not, uh, inserting oneself into their business per se, but again, being, being able to offer help around navigating some of the complexities of funding or navigating, what does it mean to, you know, maintain a, a, you know, a historical facade that replicates what was done in 1910? I think that's pretty complex. So, how can we best support business owners and their success versus us telling them what to do so much?
Thank you.
In your own words, can you, you listened to the other two ladies that were present. Is there anything you can add or something that they missed or add to what they have, uh, contributed to? I mean, they seem to have covered everything and we're just, I just thought maybe we had any new ideas or anything?
I, it seemed like there's a lot of dialogue around youth engagement and I agree. I think Mayor Rico had mentioned like all ages and that's kind of the experience and service I design for. It's designed for everyone. But if we design at the margins, like if we're designing for those perhaps with disabilities or designing perhaps for those, you know, youth or teenagers that might not feel they have access to a particular space or opportunity, I think really using that lens through how we, how we build and create together and also how we allocate our funds and our energy.
Yeah, every, both, uh, all you ladies have mentioned youth and that and bringing them downtown and that. But you really have no solution why to bring them downtown. I mean, that's the point is that we've had that issue. You know, there's nothing really for them to come downtown for.
Right.
And, you know, with, unfortunately with phones and everything else and great computers are and kids are, it's really hard to attract somebody down there. I, I don't know. There, that's kind of the big, big question. And that's why we're trying to get these boards and tourism and all these boards together to work together to get some ideas. So, that may be something when you go to the board meetings and that is to really work on something to draw, you know, the youth downtown because they're really not a whole lot to just walk through town. When I was a little kid, we had stores and we had stuff and drugstores and places to hang out. And we don't really have that anymore like we did.
Right.
And those are things that I, I think our council and everything wanna do is to build up a, a community where we do have people that come downtown, not just tourists, but the people that live here. And, and part of that is finding jobs too.
Right.
So, those are some of the points, but thank you. I appreciate you doing this.
Yeah, I'll just quickly comment. I, I think it might be a chicken or the egg problem because our people won't come unless they are aware of what's there. But it, it kind of goes both ways.
But if you don't have nothing to wear.
Yeah, I think, I think, uh, yeah, I, I just wonder too, you know, when I mentioned listening, I, I, I'd like to do a lot of survey. Sounds dorky, but I'm, uh, I think research is really important. I live right up the street from the college. I've actually become, I'd say acquaintances with a number of the students and have asked them informally, "How do you spend your time after classes? What do you do?" And I hear a lot of like, "We stay in our dorm rooms. They don't really go out much." For example, only with the college. But I think really deploying more of those formal information gathering, doing, uh, you know, a focus group, gathering, you know, ten, fifteen students or ten, fifteen, uh, youth from the high school, right? I think it's gonna take a little more of that discovery process before we can really understand versus, you know, I think embracing where youth is, where they are immediately and trying to respond and react to where they are. Um, in relation to the jobs, that's another thing I've, I really, uh, Colita and Megan did a great job, I think, of pointing out. You know, at a certain point, people, I would say maybe at eighteen or nineteen decide, "I have a future here or I don't." It's a binary. I leave or I don't. And I think apprenticeships is something that I know is done really well, um, globally. Uh, in, in, in other countries, there's a really strong, you know, from high school, a very clear path of I can make, earn a really great living in the trades as a plumber, as an, you know, as an electrician. And I think strengthening clarity and opportunity and getting real, you know, hands-on experience, trying out different trades could be a really powerful way for, for kids to leave their footprint or thumbprint on something and have meaning and also secure their own future as well.
I, I was intrigued by your use, I think you said legacy families and making sure their voice is heard. How would you propose to encourage people who have lived here, have been raised here all their life, to become more involved in downtown life?
Yeah, I, I think of a few things. One would be what I mentioned prior, like really calling folks in. You know, sitting with, with them, spending time, building relationships. I think there often is a bridge between quote new versus old. Um, I think secondly, representation's really important. How can we create, create space physically in, in these types of seats and roles? Um, a hypothesis I might have is, from what I understand, a lot of these board positions, um, you know, there's always open, open spots. And so, I've always been curious, you know, why community members who've grown up here, lived here, don't necessarily, uh, always go for these spots. And I just, I wonder if perhaps there could be an opportunity, um, to, to talk more about this opportunity and what you can do and for people to have faith or, um, restore confidence that you actually can have your voice heard here and change can happen in a town like this, at this level. So, I think it just takes time and focusing on the relationship.
One thing I like, I think is Walsenberg has done a really good job of researching and honoring the hundred families that settled that area. And I think that we could, um, perhaps do something like that. But that doesn't really address downtown economic development. But I, I think it does in a way because it means there would be more representation of that group of people in the downtown activities. Cause that's something that I see is, is really lacking and I, and I don't know why. I don't know where they are or what they're doing.
I, I'll offer, you know, I, I, when I came, I noticed a very stark difference. For example, uh, when I came to Art Cartopia, you know, that art, you know, event, you know, there was certainly a, a nice crowd there on Main Street, but it was nothing compared to the Labor Day parade. And frankly, the demographics and who showed up was completely different. And those are the kind of questions that I have of, do folks feel seen? Do they feel like they belong? Do they feel like their interests and their needs are being taken into account when these kind of events are created? And I think there's an opportunity to more formally integrate and to like call that in and ask, you know, and, and, I don't know. I don't wanna say that hasn't been done, but i- if there's a way we can, you know, facilitate that systematically, um, it just takes time. But I think.
I think that's really perceptive and it does need attention. Thank you.
I appreciate your presentation. I have no questions.
Okay.
One question I had is, on your application, it says, shows that, uh, the amount of time that you could give per month, and you have four hours approximately. Is there any reason why you put four hours? Could it be more?
Yes, I, I just probably put, I guessed admittedly on time commitment. Um, I know there's two, two meetings, uh, bi, uh, bi-weekly. Um, and I was just trying to come up with a reasonable average, but I'm able to commit what's needed.
Okay. You, you had something that none of us had mentioned. Uh, you know, we're talking about the youth, we're talking about tourism. But one of the areas that I think that, uh, that I know that we need to concentrate on is on the disabled, the vets, those type of things. I think if there's an area there that I think that we could capitalize on because, uh, you know, the disabled, the vets, those, uh, cause in Los Angeles County, there's like sixteen hundred vets. So, I think that we could, we could do better for them. Uh, what are your thoughts on that?
Yes. Yes, we can. Um, yeah, as I mentioned, you know, a lot of my work stems in thinking through how to, if we're developing an event, for example, how do we create an experience through these different lenses? What would this experience look and feel like for someone who might be disabled? So, if we're developing a festival and closing off mainly commercial, what questions do we need to ask? What kind of considerations or accommodations need to be made to ensure that if you're participating in the parade, you can be comfortable and participate alongside everyone? Or if you're not, how can you still get to Colita's store on Main without, you know, a massive obstruction? And so, thinking through creative ways for additional ride sharing, mobility, transportation, um, volunteer support. Like, I think there's a lot of kind of social services needs that can be integrated into things that are already here that I think just require a little, um, plugging it and plugging, like putting the puzzle pieces together.
You know, those of us that are from Trinidad, which of all of us, the one that's not here from Oregon from Trinidad is Erin. But, you know, looking back as a youth, uh, I think there were what, three soda fountains in Trinidad? You know, those type of things I think would be good because that draws youth downtown and they would hang around downtown. Those type of things I think would, would help. And not only that, but the college students. So, uh, I, I think that we need to expand our vision, uh, of what we want Trinidad to be. Not only a destination, but a destination for our local people as well.
Sure.
Thank you for, uh, for applying.
Thank you.
Except there are two openings for this and we will have those at weeks.
June six, ma'am.
June six.
Excuse me, can I just ask a clarifying question on that?
Sure.
My name's Paul Morales. My understanding from somebody on the board, um, and, and speaking with Krista is that there were three positions available and I, I heard two today and I just, I wanna make sure I was right about that.
There were two.
Seven.
Yeah.
Oh, you had more, yeah.
We had seven.
Yeah, I mean, let's see. So, I have a list here in front of me. One, two, three, four, five, six. There's seven total positions. The soonest one, uh, that expires is Kimberly Schultz on three, one, twenty-five. Uh, but we're only showing two vacancies.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, anyway, maybe, yeah, we, we actually just confirmed with somebody, or I actually just confirmed to somebody on the board that, that at least there were, at least three available, not more than that. But I just.
We will triple check on that.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Make sure we're not missing something. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good. All right. Thank you very much for applying and see you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, item number two, Greenlight Foundation update. Mr. Jeff, you, Dean, what do you have for us?
Good afternoon, everybody. It is so great to be here. And as I was saying earlier to Erin, you guys look even better in person than you do in a public square version. So, so it's, it's great to not see your mug shots for a chance. So it's great to not see your mug shots for a chance, but to be with all of you. I'm honored to be here today. I'm Jeff Shoemaker. To my left, my friend, my colleague, my fellow pirate, Dean Pearson, who is absolutely the talent and the brains behind this partnership. I'm also really excited to tell you that we are going to show you an absolute exact example of how you can get your kids outside and how you can bring them downtown and how your downtown vibrancy can be increased. And I believe those are words, but I believe they will be substantiated today. Dean and I were remembering on the drive down that it was two years and about two weeks, May 6th of 2021, when we had our first, when we had our first meeting. First time I met the one and only Jared "Wild Man" Chatterley. And it's been a journey ever since, let me just tell you that. And that's, I'm making a joke, and it's been great when Steve gets back, what a superb city manager you have. And so I applaud that. When I started this effort, I used four words in terms of what we were determined to provide to you, and I think we've gotten there today. And those words are big, brave, bold, and badass. And that's what we are going to try to do. I think we've done it and we're going to show you that today. We are then going to need all of you because along with BBB and B comes hard, comes challenging, comes scary. I know about this. There's a line in one of my favorite movies, the hard is what makes it good. If it was easy, everybody could do it. So this is bold, this is brave, this is big, this is badass. And we will need the community and as their leaders, you, to embrace this and to not be afraid and to be visionary so that kids, be they below 18 or be they students at your community college, say, guess what I get to do? Guess where I went? Do you know what's happening next week? Do you know what's happening next month? You won't have to worry about finding ways.
Before you go on, anybody that's wearing a hat, could you please remove it? And thank you very much.
So let me stop there. I'm going to take words and turn it into action. We're honored to be here. We're honored to be part of this project. And I'll let Dean show you how this project speaks for itself and then we're open to any and all questions after. Thank you.
Mayor Rico, council, thanks so much for your time today. Appreciate the chance to come and talk about our project. So everybody see that okay?
This monitor's not.
Sorry, technical difficulty. It's all good. So what I'm going to do is go through our plan, very briefly, go through our concept plan, zoom in on a couple of areas, and then we've got a 3D model of the new vision for Chino Park. And then we'd be happy to have a discussion. Can you see or, shall I go ahead?
I can either look over there.
Okay, I think we can see it next. Great, thank you. Okay, so our study area, just to re-familiarize you, starts at Nevada and basically goes down to Linden Ave. And we're basically looking at how can we activate the river corridor? I mean, it's a beautiful river. The first time I came down here was in May, two years ago with Jeff, and I hadn't, I've driven through town many times, but I'd never seen the river before. So it's an amazing resource right in the middle of downtown, which not many cities can say. So here's the existing trail. Can you all see my cursor? So here's the existing trail. As you know, right now you have to cross Anima Street and Cedar Street at Gray, which is a little dangerous. We're showing the trail actually going underneath Anima Street, along the river and underneath Cedar as well. So we've got two underpasses. So that would make the trail a lot more enjoyable and a lot more safe for trail users. Trail continues in its existing alignment all the way down to Linden. And then one thing that we heard loud and clear in the public process we had is that people really wanted a loop trail. So we'll utilize the existing sidewalk on Linden and then we're showing a loop trail on the north side of the river that crosses at the railroad bridge. We would need a new bridge over the ditch. Goes in front of the hotel, the new hotel, over to Commercial, crosses Commercial, then we're showing this. Loop, go along the railroad tracks with a fence we would put up for safety to Cedar Street, and then it would loop back around to the Waterworks Building. So that's a loop of just about one and a half miles. So, you know, imagine the new office of outdoor recreation being the Waterworks Building and people being able to do that loop trail, which I think would be really, really cool. A lot of opportunities for public art. That's something that we know Trinidad is really expanding public art. So we'll talk about that in a little bit, but we see that could be, you know, murals underneath the bridges on those walls. That could be sculpture along the trails, sculpture along the river. But I'll go ahead and zoom in here on the Chino Park area. So Chino Park, we, you'll notice Modico Road is right about here. So we've expanded the park. So right now your park is about 2.1 acres. What we're showing is 5.3 acres. So that involves some property negotiation, acquisition, but we just felt like, again, doing something really bold and really expanding this park into something that has the potential to be huge for the community to have festivals, concerts, movie nights. You talk about sort of activating the river and activating downtown. I think this could be just amazing. So I'll go through this in more detail with the 3D model that will fly through the site. But we've got a parking lot sort of at the south end, so you could still drive through to get to Convent Street. It's just expanding the park. So the lawn area right now that we're showing right in here could accommodate 6,000 to 10,000 people, which again, it's just huge. That's a game changer. So we've got a stage and shade structure here overlooking the river, access down to the river, a splash pad that recirculates water, another shelter and two playgrounds. And each of those playgrounds is bigger than the one you have now. So one would be for two to five-year-olds, one would be for five to 12-year-olds. And then a pedestrian promenade that's 20 feet wide that would allow you to park food trucks, to have farmers markets, to have, you know, art sales, all kinds of things. So we're keeping the existing buildings on the corner. We're linking into the Waterworks Building with an accessible path. From the Waterworks Building, we're going to have out the back a little overlook area where we would cut down that existing wall and have some tables with umbrellas, some shady spots for people to hang out and watch the river, some xeric gardens and sort of smaller crusher finds paths with benches and places for people to sit. There's another thing we heard in the public process is people just wanted places to sit, hang out along the river. At Commercial Street, we're looking at taking out the parking on one side and expanding that sidewalk, moving that curb out and making that sidewalk 18 feet wide or so, putting some tables with umbrellas so people can again, sit and look out over the river. Instead of doing a ramp, trying to do a cantilevered ramp down from the bridge, we're looking at utilizing this alley and doing some brick paving and some colorful planters to get people down to the riverwalk. We've got some different river access points between Commercial and the railroad bridge. We've got one here where tubers can pull out if they want to continue on down and go around the dam. We've got a little overlook here with a shelter and what I would call a vista bar, where there's little bar seats and a railing that's a counter so people can sit and have coffee or have lunch there. This is the beach area that I think you all know at the bottom of the dam. We would formalize that with some stone slab seating. Have a little plaza there as well, again, with some shade tables with umbrellas, places to sit, hang out. Got river access on both sides of the river here, a little loop path that connects back into the trail. And then the Los Ninos Park area. As you know, if you're going down the trail right now, you see a chain link fence around the basketball court, another chain link fence around a playground, lots of weeds. Doesn't look like the playground is used very much. So the idea here is to really give the park a trail presence. Create a little plaza there with some xeric gardens, some seating, another overlook and a shade structure. We keep the existing bridge over that little drainage area. And then creating, we relocate the basketball court down to this part of the park. Maybe enhance the existing playground, create a street presence as well with a little entry plaza and then create some accessible walks. There's really no walks in the park right now. So it's a place, we're talking about disabled and vets and giving them a hard accessible surface to get to all these amenities in the park. And lastly, a new trailhead on city-owned property for about 43 cars with a shade structure as well. So it gives more people access to riverwalk. So with that, I would like to run this video and it's a big file, so it might take a second to open, but. Windows media player?
Yeah, give that a try, Dean.
Go through the configurations. Councilman?
I've got to recommend.
Good thing I'm here.
Yeah. Exactly. There we go.
Yeah.
There we go. So this is the promenade I was telling you about. We've got swinging benches and stone slabs for seating along the edge. Again, it's wide enough to allow for food trucks. We've got plenty of pedestrian lights for security. There's the splash pad in the center and we would do colored concrete with crushed recycled blue glass to really let that sparkle. And the idea is to kind of draw people in and bring them down to the riverfront. We're relocating the memorial over to this part of the site, closer to the river, give it a little bit more prominence. And then we'll take you down along the trail. So again, this is the trail underpass. And it's also a goal to kind of thin out non-native invasive vegetation all along this portion of the river. So this is the river access point. It's, you know, stone slabs, places to sit, places to hang out, places to eat your lunch, get right down and dip your toes in the water. This is the stage and shelter where again, you could have concerts, movie nights, festivals. So we're heading back to the south now. The two playgrounds are coming up, one on the right, one on the left. Another shade structure here. Some public art to kind of announce the plaza and announce the park. Xeric, you know, watering conserving plants. And that's the new parking lot on the left. And then these are just some views. And this is the entry with the public art and fish sculpture. That could be anything. Thank you for accepting your request.
Exactly. That's part of my job.
You do well. So this is, this is what I was talking about, you know, blue concrete in the pavement to kind of draw people down to the river. Because a lot of times, you know, visitors come to the city and may not know the river's there. So I think announcing it and showing them the way would be great. You know, open plaza next to this stage structure. I think the river access could be really great for trail users, a place to stop and rest and for visitors to come down and see the river up close. The memorial area, food trucks. I don't know if you've ever seen these swing benches, but there aren't many companies that make them, but they're super popular. It's like having a port swing in a parking lot. Really nice. That's my favorite, the doughnut food truck.
Right.
So, you know, the playground, we haven't fully designed the playground, but for the older kids, we love this sort of adventure theme of climbing walls and things like that. So that might be a way to really activate the space for the young teenagers. This is the other plaza entrance to the park along Anima Street. So I do have a couple other views that we can do, we can do 360 views and so forth. But do you have any questions, any things you want to look at again?
I had one question. I like the idea of the climbing walls for the kids to bring some entertainment down there. You know, you've been concentrating more on the upper part of the upper bank of the river, right? Has there been any changes or modifications that was maybe was not in accordance with the original plans?
No, I would say the only thing that's changed from the original plans is we have more detail. We got topographic surveys, so the underpasses, we're confident those will work. They're eight foot clear from the bottom of the bridge and about four feet higher than the river. So those both work well better than I thought, actually. And the only thing we're doing in the river is we're creating access points, formalizing some access points.
That's good.
Yeah. Other than that, everything has stayed fairly true to the original vision, just with more detail.
Okay. And there is also, as part of the scope, this part of our contract, this latest scope, surveying has been taking place, land ownership is being determined as we speak. One of the premier landowners along the river is a couple, Mr. and Mrs. Unknown. And so we are, we are trying to find out what unknownness mean, what unknown means. Because the first person that I want to look for, the first entity that I like joking aside, to replace unknown is the city of Trinidad. You know, the more clear clarified ownership of the river corridor, the better for your ability to move this vision forward. So we are grateful to Steve and to Jared and to this body for allowing us to include that as part of our scope.
Yeah.
How many other people have we talked to that, you know, for land acquisition in there?
It's, and I'm not trying to be a racist.
Chino, as far as changing the park area?
I'm going to say this, you're the first. You're the first that's seen this.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just kind of curious.
And councilman, that's an apropos and very fair and strategic question, but I always go to the, to the entity with whom I'm under contract so that you all, you're paying for this. So it is appropriate for you all to see this before anybody else does. And then the conversations, your rights are going to need to happen.
Well, I understand that. And then do you have a, and I don't know how to put this in other way, but do you have a backup plan for some of this acquisition that can be taken care of? I mean, there, there's land there where Sebastian and Jim is in the football field and that. You can have a real issue with that. I guarantee you, we will definitely not get it. Because we're having a problem with parking and everything else. And I worked there at the church. And that's a real touchy area where you've been having problems with now. So what I'm asking is if there are other plans that you have that we can maybe back up some of these areas, I mean, change some of the plans for the areas that are.
May I ask you, when you said Sebastian and Jim, what were you referring to?
The gym right there. And that's the parking lot. Oh, down here on the bottom, you can see it down here where the parking lot is. They're taking out.
Right across.
Yeah, they're taking out, they're taking out the football field and everything.
Yeah. Because the gym, the gym still exists, right?
Yeah, because Chino, Chino owns part of the football field and the church owns the other half. And Chino, I mean, and this is just with us, is that, you know, he's building buildings over there and he's taking up all the parking. So we're having issues with our parking for the church. And that was an area we were looking at, putting a parking lot for us. So I mean, I'm just asking if some of this could be real back to a different area. And I understand you did a lot of work for it. It's really great. But if we don't get the land acquisition, you're going to have issues.
We're starting big and bold.
Well, I understand that.
We can always back down later, but we didn't want to start.
Well, I understand what you're saying, but there are some options that we can do with this other than what you have here.
Sure.
Okay. No, I mean, that's the biggest question is, you know, the land acquisition. I like it. It's, it'd really be great if we had the, you know, another prize where we're going to take up all this money. But it is really nice. It would be one of the beautiful deals for that park. But we have to, realistically, you know, some of this may not happen. So that's what we kind of wanted to look at in what we're doing.
Sure.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and Councilmember, shoot, great questions. And obviously, this is just a vision for an ideal right now. But you're spot on. So what we're looking for is, you know, consent really from you all to pursue some of these end acquisition issues and see what we can do. Certainly, if we're not able to acquire certain portions of land, we will get back with these guys to revise our plans and.
Yeah, that was my, really what I was trying to get at. Yeah, that was my, really what I was trying to get at, who is going to be responsible for doing it.
And we will continue with these guys, and we will have those conversations and see what...
Great job.
And I appreciate that, and I'm a lot of things, good and bad, naive, ain't one of them. And what I mean by that is, I realize the exact issues. We know that, and that's why we brought them to your city manager, brought them to your outdoor recreation. And again, we, the history of my work is to do and envision what, I can't tell you how many times people say, "That'll never happen. You're never going to get that. You're not going to find the money." And I love it, because I'm not ten out of ten, I'm eight and a half to nine out of ten to make that change. And I'll just give you two quick examples. It only took eighteen years for Denver to receive three hundred and fifty-eight million dollars from the U.S. Army Corps, signed by the mayor and the Corps two weeks ago. It only took fourteen years to completely reconfigure Chatfield Reservoir, so that guess what, right now it's holding twenty thousand acres of water for downstream ag and upstream metropolitan, all that water. And I'm a C.U. grad, so I make fun of Nebraska, I heard you right. But that water is not...
We have issues with Kansas here.
I won't even tell a joke, I won't even tell a joke on what the N on the Nebraska helmet stands for. That's for another day. But all I'm saying to you is, you brought us here.
Yeah, right.
You brought us here to give you something that is mind-numbingly large. Can you ratchet it back?
Sure.
Do I recommend that?
Oh, not yet.
This thing is, this thing isn't even breathing on its own yet. But we've got it, we've got to give you what we feel from our standpoint professionally. And I heard the word passion, I've got a little bit about that. I know a little bit about that. But that's why you brought us to your town, and that's why, that's what we were asked to deliver, and we don't do small things.
Yeah, you delivered well. I understand that, and we just want to, you know, make it work for us too. So that's why we're trying to get all this information and everything done.
You bet.
Do you have some other stuff to show us?
No.
No.
Got any questions?
I have a concern. I mean, this, I've been in this process from the very beginning, and we haven't really strayed much from what our original ideas were, and they are beautiful. I mean, I can envision Chaminade Park and that area. With food trucks are getting to be so popular right now. I mean, that is a phenomenal area. And I know there's going to be hurdles that we have to cross, but I'm only here for two more years, but I'm going to push it forward however I can. There's only one thing I don't like about this plan is for you taking out parking on Commercial Street. You guys have to go by there.
That was his idea. Hey, you're fired.
And it's a reasonable, it's a reasonable concern. I love the idea, but I don't think it's practical because of the parking.
You're damned if you do and you're damned if you don't, since the parking.
And I'm really upset with you guys, because I gave you an idea and you did not incorporate it in this plan.
That's his fault.
It is your fault. No, no, I'm just, you know, I like that idea. I really wish we could purchase that vacant land on Commercial Street where the old theater used to be and have access from Commercial Street down there.
And I will reiterate, reiterate, excuse me, what Dean said. The word vision is just that, and the beautiful part about vision is it can be evolved, it can be altered, it can be updated. You know, there's this little thing called the Telluride Jazz Festival. This city has the ability to not just compete, but to put that thing on its ear if you have something like this.
No, I think it's...
And that's just one example. You want to talk about economic development. You want to talk about tourism. You want to talk about lodging. You want to talk about families living here. I heard it over and over again. What can we do to have our own citizens come here and get outside as much as we attract us out-of-towners?
That would be the biggest bulletin board that Trinidad could erect, because you can see it from the interstate.
Oh, and then you, I hear you have a new state park nearby.
Yeah.
Let's not be up like this, though. This is pretty nice.
I do have to tell you, on the back of my little MSH card, and you guys remember what MSH stands for? It'll be PCM, recorded, makes stuff happen, and if you turn it upside down, it's how stuff works. You turn it back around, it makes you make her happy, which we...
That's right.
Okay. We are honored to have a standing rep with Crystal Drelling at Fisher's State Park, Fisher's Peak State Park, and when their visitor centers there. When you walk in, you're going to see an entrance table, the likes of something you've never seen. It's a 3D-layered topographic map of the park. Sliver by sliver by sliver, and it's got engraved burnt-in images of the wildlife that is going to be there. And I know you know, I've known Crystal forever. Keep her happy. Yeah, you got a winner with Crystal.
People here.
Yeah.
Other questions?
Yeah, we probably...
The only place you're proposing removing parking is along the bridge, right?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
On Commercial Street.
Just the one side.
Just, that's not...
Go by there.
Yeah.
We do need some...
Yeah, that's...
We need alternatives to that for that. Are the pathways that go down around the loop, what's the surface? Is it gravel? Is it paved? What's...
We're showing everything paved right now, and you can do soft surface in floodplains, but there are a lot of maintenance. Like, sometimes a two-year event will wash them out, so concrete is better.
And your river's cranking pretty hard right now.
It is.
Good. I actually prefer that, because I like to walk and like to walk in dirt as much as I like to walk in green. But anyways, I think it looks great. Only one aspect of it that I don't quite get is if you have a bandshell of some kind facing out. Those two oval-shaped things that come on toward it seem like it should go out instead of come in somehow? I'm not sure if I'm making this...
Oh, I know exactly where you're talking.
So instead of coming in here, wouldn't it make more sense to have something come out so that people naturally fan out to watch a performance rather than are narrowed into that pathway?
Oh, they can watch from the grass.
That's whole area.
That's probably what you want to do.
For people to bring chairs and...
Okay.
Chairs and things.
There's just something about that, though. It wouldn't make me feel weird if I weren't standing on the pathway that's there.
Oh, in comedy?
Yeah.
Okay.
And so...
Have you ever been to the Botanic Gardens for concerts?
No. That's all they do is at the Botanic Gardens. Anyways, but I love it. Do we have a price tag at all?
I didn't do it. It took you guys so long. What's this sucker gonna cost?
Price is gonna be...
He did it for sure.
He did kind of.
Well, I did. I told him.
You did.
How much?
So, if I may, and then I'll turn it to you, because this will be, again, your work, brother, but the remaining part of our current contract is to give preliminary costing for what you see before you put. Again, we felt that it is best that we give this idea to you, let you noodle on it, and then hopefully not cut it back yet. But once we have that confirmation from, hopefully, from Steve and from Jared, then our next step, as we finish out this phase, and, you know, selfishly, we hope this is not phase last. That will be a decision made by others. But as part of the final part of this work, that preliminary costing will happen.
That's right.
I have one other thought that I, so that's to come, if you have buy-in. Okay. I understand the last time there was some pushback from downstream irrigators. Do we have any understanding of where we are with them on this?
I'm going to take a stab and then, you know...
Yeah, if you want me to cover that, Jeff, I'm happy to.
You know, in fairness, I, and I'm timid, I'm not, but I think, I think it would be best, because the change after those meetings, the last one was in December, the change with some of what you've seen earlier, we changed our direction to this because the city asked us to, so...
Yeah, and that's a great question, Councilmember Luttrell. We did have a meeting with the irrigators, I believe, in last November, and presented some preliminary plans to them at that time. The contemplated plans at that time had some work done in the actual river itself, and we got some very clear feedback from these folks that they, they weren't going to be supportive of anything that would augment the current river in that area. So we, Jared and I, got back with Dean and Jeff and decided to focus more on the robust designing of I-25 to Commercial Street. So that's where you're seeing more of the amenities, more of the focus. The video that they showed was specifically that area. And as we work downstream, we're hoping we can accomplish good things there as well. And some of the original visioning that you're seeing in this certainly captures that. It's a little bit different than we, I think, had originally contemplated, but in being respectful to people who have an opposing viewpoint, we're just taking a different approach for what we're focusing on. So that's really what's happening at this point. But as far as the actual banks of the river and what we can accomplish with trails and amenities on that, that's fair game for us, and so we're going to be focusing on those features as well.
Yeah, the whole idea was, after that meeting, was to stay away from the river, bang from the river portion of its south.
Can you move that over this way a little bit towards Nevada Avenue? Wanted to ask a question.
Yeah, sure.
Let's see, we have a question from Aaron.
That's good, right there.
No, that's fine. You have a question?
I do. I feel like I have a lot to say. Obviously, I'll try and keep it really short. I'm not, I don't like quotes a lot, but I think this really does apply. I think someone says Michelangelo. I didn't know him, but he said...
Idiot.
Something like, "The greatest danger for most of us is not that we aim too high and miss, but rather it is that we aim too low to reach it." And that, and synergy, I think, is the very definition of what you guys brought to us. And I wanted to say something to Frank if I can. A lot of times when people say, "With all due respect," it means something disrespectful is coming. So with all due respect, and I genuinely mean that, you know, a friend of a friend is your friend, and with, if we're going to put parking right adjacent to the Sebastian and Jim, I mean, man, well...
That's not the issue.
Okay, but hypothetically, what I'm saying is, if we brought parking there and we liven up that whole area, I would think that would be super good for the Catholic Church in effect. Putting it in a very enlivened area is giving something for congregants to have and be proud of in an area that's alive. That's just my take. But also, and in no way am I intending to make this about me in any capacity, but man, Councilwoman Grago, you mentioned you have two years and some, I think. So I've got six months left on this, and I really believe, since I've gotten on council, I've talked about, "Let's do some stuff to make Trinidad a destination." And I'm so glad to say we're doing that now. We have the RFP out for that. And if this doesn't work together, that, I don't know what does. And all of you, I'm sure, all of you have heard the radio commercial, and one thing that's evident to me from interviewing for the Tourism Board, is people don't spend money on stuff that doesn't work. So Pueblo has put a radio commercial out there advertising their Riverwalk. That means, that means it works. They're bringing people to Pueblo to go to their Riverwalk. I mean, if Riverwalks were pies, there wouldn't be, theirs would not be a slice of this. So, I mean, we can, we can attract people. If we attract people, we bring dollars to town. If we bring dollars to town, we ensure our survival. I think it's something that we should aim as high as possible, back to my good friend Michelangelo.
You know, my perspective is, you know, when I decided to run for this seat, I mentioned that if Trinidad's going to move forward, we need to take risks. If there's no risk, there's no benefit. And that's the way we need to look at it. We know that, you know, there's going to be some modifications, like, you know, there's some, there are going to be modifications along the way. It's a vision, it's a plan. We need some backup plans. We need a Plan B for some of these areas that might be contentious or may not work. And I think those are really, really important things to keep in the back of our mind, that if... I'll give you a prime example, Fisher's Peak State Park, how that started. I had to do a hell of a lot of talking to council to get support for that project, and...
What year was that?
Two thousand and eighteen, because they told me first my person...
But anyway, you know, both times that I had to go to council to get support for the first part and the second part, but like I said, it's a risk that I know that we took, but it's paid off. And in this particular case, I know that it's a big vision, but we have to have a vision. And if we're going to do the things that we want to do, I know this is a long-term project. It's not a tomorrow deal. We're probably looking at ten years down the road, maybe. Maybe not.
We'll see here.
We know the cost is going to be substantial, but there is money out there. You know, we've had discussions with GOCO, as you have had. There's still that one large grant that they're still talking about, that may still be available. I'm not sure how many of those they'll give out. I know that they, when they were down here, you know, they mentioned that they really wanted to support Trinidad, you know. And so I think we keep our eyes on the ball there, go after it, because I think that's a ten million dollar paycheck. If we can garner that, this will really set this thing along the path that we want it to. And like I said, but I think that, the next question I have for you is, if we had, let's say, five million dollars, where do we start? What's step one?
Go ahead.
First step for me has always been to activate and to have safe activation. So Chaminade Park is what we proposed. That's the big of the big of the big. But how do you make your trail access increase? How do you make underpasses exist that don't? How can you bring art and wayfinding and reasons for people to want to come down to the trail? Very honestly, what do you do to make your trail safer? I know a little bit about unsafe trails that my family has built for over forty-five years. And the biggest enemy, well, the biggest opportunity for negative activity is a lack of positive activity opportunities. So expand the trail that you have now, improve it, increase access to it, take away some pretty darn dangerous at-street crossings right now. And that is comparatively, and I hate to use these two words in one sentence, that's cheap money. That's comparatively cheap money. So if I had to, Mayor, say, "Where is one option for a starting point?" That could show some immediate results, benefits, and proven success.
Yeah, no hanging fruit is what we're looking for.
Better. Much more briefly stated. Imagine.
Any other questions? You know, I like the idea. I like the potential that this has. I know it's going to be a long-term project. I know there's a lot of money involved here, but I think that keeping the eye on the ball is what we need to do and collaborate with those entities that will help us to be able to come together to apply for this money that's out there, because it is there.
Nobody can do this alone.
Right.
Denver can't do it alone. Pueblo can't do it alone. Colorado Springs Fountain Creek Vision Park, we completed that for them last year. Brand-new mayor, brand-new hope, brand-new opportunity.
I don't know if you knew about it, but last week, you know, the city and the county had a, went together for a plan for an area planning. I'm not sure if you've seen that?
Not yet.
I've got no recreations.
A recreational area. Take a look at that and see what their thoughts are.
Yes, synergy.
Very good. Any other questions?
No, and if you have to take away those parking spaces, that will be my contribution.
Well, you're going to have some spare time on hearing in a couple of years, so we'll...
Yes, I am.
We need contractual assistance of MSH and Associates, so you never know.
You got it, baby.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, real quick.
Sure.
I just want to thank Dean and Jeff. They've been tremendous to work with. I know it's been a while before we've gotten in front of you. The true next steps in my mind is, now that we've got your feedback, we want to work heavily on property acquisition, start securing the land, be able to do this. So Mr. and Mrs. Unknown are going to become our best friends, and we will probably reinforce some plans and ideas for how we can get that land acquired sooner than later, and also partnering with our funders to see how we can... sooner than later and also partnering with our funders to see how we can buff some of these things as we continue with our policy designs.
Yeah, because I know, besides that one large grant that GOCO has, they do have a lot of other grant opportunities that...
There's numerous sources out there.
Okay.
Thank you, guys. It's been a pleasure. And I love your city. And I've said that publicly and repeatedly. And those that are in this room know that, you know, I don't BS. So I am BS, but I don't... I love this city and we'd love to remain involved in NSH. Thank you guys very much.
Okay, on to the next item. Item three legislative, who were you, Mike Beasley? Hopefully after your long-awaited and needed rest.
I'm not quite there yet.
Not there yet?
Good afternoon. It's good to see everybody in person, as Jeff said just a minute ago. I'm going to, I think I'm going to pick up where we left off in our last meeting, and that's talk a little bit about Senate Bill 213. That was the most lobbied bill of this last legislative session. And you joined a coalition of municipalities and counties across the state to try and find a restored voice for local control in this legislative debate. And as a reminder, that bill was one of the most egregious attacks of local control that I've seen in land use in a long, long time. I think the most significant bill related to land use since we passed House Bill 1074 back in the middle 1970s. So that's how important this bill was and the effects that it had on mandates for local governments to have accessory dwelling units or density requirements around light rail and trains and that. And while it was fair to say, and bus lines, and why it was fair to say that that bill may not have had much effect on our city in the near term, in the out years, I would summarize it this way, you know, you're next. And there's this real change that's happened in the legislature in both political parties, and that is we've elected a lot of new folks with term limits. We had 36% turnover from, so I have 36% turnover in the legislature that we have now. And so that's 36 out of 100 members are quite a few to educate on. And as I joked, being now one of the older folks in the room, when we meet with these legislators, the legislators who don't know what Tabor is, who didn't know what the Gallagher memo was, who haven't ventured around our state, haven't visited all 64 counties, that type of thing. And so it was really important that they understand what they were voting on. And I thought that the Senate did a very good job. And if it's all right with you, I'd like to indulge you on not just what you were opposed to, but for, as a refresher and for your constituents that will look back on this, what were we for in Senate Bill 213? We were for directing the Department of Local Affairs to study a statewide and regional housing needs assessment, something that I think is critical as we talk about what is affordable, what is attainable housing, you know, really, what did that mean and to take into account what you were doing locally. It required some of those, some jurisdictions that don't have those types of plans to do one and also include implementation strategies. It required DOLA to do a statewide summit on land use and affordable housing. And one, I mentioned earlier that we have a lot of legislators that aren't really familiar with Colorado and our history, and that's something Governor Romer did in the early 90s that came back with recommendations for things like GOCO and changes to transportation, planning at a more regional level, those types of things, changes to our state budget. So that was one of the things that we advocated for. We, one of the things as a former DOLA employee myself, you know, reinforcing and with not just $15 million of new money, but legislative intent and reinforcement to do more technical support for our local governments, for local master planning, ideas on how to share information and commitments to how we grow, how we tax, and how we share infrastructure through intergovernmental agreements, those types of things, that's what we were for. That's largely what came out of the Senate version of Senate Bill 213. And the House, as when we talked, was, had dramatically changed that back to all the preemption arguments, that they would take over for local governments, a lot of those kind of planning and infrastructure requirements, prioritization of spending at the local level related to growth and infrastructure. And so this bill was fought over intensely until day 119 of this 120-day session, because if it hadn't passed in that, by midnight, it wouldn't have been able to make it through the process. And ultimately, I think at the end, there were 23 or 24 no votes in the Senate to accept that House version that restored all of those mandates. So it wasn't really that close of a vote. The public didn't get to see it because they weren't counting votes. And so to get to that type of number, it had to have been bipartisan. It had to have been urban, rural, and suburban. And I think it was a real rejection of kind of this state overreach. And remember that this punctuated a long conversation in the legislature about what does local control mean? Because you had mandates for a green building code, you had mandates for a wildfire building code. You saw in House Bill 1001 kind of the last-minute attempt to change your CDOT planning regions and the Transportation Commission that really kind of shoveled more authority, placed it at the state level. And so while those efforts were successful in eroding local control, the efforts in 213 were not. Having said that, I think it'll come back very clearly. The governor has said, as late as the day after session at the Denver Chamber event, that he really wanted to do more on housing, more mandates on housing, more authority at the Department of Local Affairs to have broader rulemaking authority, similar to like the Department of Health or certain divisions within the Department of Natural Resources. And those are things that we want to continue to engage in and be a part of. And to that point on engagement, Trinidad was part of a coalition. There aren't many cities or counties in our state that engage lobbyists separate from CCI and CML, but you all have made that decision. And there were about nine or 10 other jurisdictions around the state that also retained help to give extra horsepower to CML and CCI. And I really do believe that made a difference. I haven't seen CML and CCI worked as closely over the last 35 years that I did in this last session, and I want to commend the leadership, both the elected officials as well as the staff of both of those organizations. I can't say enough good. CCI and CML both firing on all cylinders. And I think that local governments and the values that you've run for office for will well serve in that effort. So I want to stop there and see if you have any questions about Senate Bill 213, the thing that we had our special meeting on it. You made it clear to take a position on it.
Any questions on that?
I'm just glad that the one-size-all-fit approach in Denver doesn't suit us here.
I have a question. Why is the governor so bent on this? Why is he's... I know you can't, you don't understand, but he's, I mean, you don't know.
No, but I make a pretty good living at guessing on occasion. In fairness to the governor, we've had this con, I worked in the early 90s when Governor Romer did the Smart Girl stuff. I actually lobbied for the Colorado Home Builders. And so it's interesting that some members of the development community today, like they did then, said, "If you change the laws, I can do anything. I can build X and Y and Z, and I can make it affordable." And remember, we had that conversation in 2017, that if you reform the defects laws, we will build multimodal transportation along bus and rail corridors up and down the Front Range, which didn't really happen. And so I think the governor was convinced to a large degree that members of the development community would go ahead and build along those light rail corridors, for example. Let me give you an example that, like in the city of Aurora, they have stopped waiting for the private sector to come in and develop along those rail corridors. And they've given every signal in the world to do it. They've changed their zoning. They've even bought land themselves and acted as a developer, making public improvements like water, sewer, drainage, et cetera. They've made those own improvements and now are trying to sell those properties as a way to incent development along those corridors. And sometimes the market just speaks. And back when I lobbied for the home builders, we had too much rental, or excuse me, too much owner occupied. We needed a rental market. And look how that has changed over 30 years. And sometimes the market just speaks. But the governor is passionate about this, especially when we see all of these federal and state dollars going into affordable housing. And as we, and still today, as we've talked about back in the late fall or early winter, the state is still having trouble obligating and spending those housing dollars. And I am still deeply concerned that at the end of this term with these federal funds, we will write a check back or we'll send a letter back to the federal government saying we tried and we're sorry and we couldn't do it. And it's proven by a bill that was introduced this session that changed some of the timeframes for the expenditure and obligation of those dollars from a previous state bill that we did in the beginning of COVID. So that underscores kind of my concern that we need to do more to obligate those dollars. And I really am fearful for my friends at the Department of Local Affairs, the legislature, both this one and the previous legislature, have kind of set them up for failure, that we've given them so much to do. They were, going into this session, DOLA had to hire more new people in the Division of Housing than I had when I worked there.
Wow.
So that gives you an underscore. So, or it underscores kind of my concern about what we have to do. As, at the local level, we have, I almost feel it's an obligation that to offer our help to them, which is unusual, right? How can we help DOLA? Because a lot of times, local governments are saying, "How can you help me technically or financially?" But it's almost we have an obligation to help DOLA kind of get through this, get through the legislature and the federal government hurdles that they have put in place to see if we can help them meet their goal, because these are transformative dollars and a transformative time in the housing space. And I do personally believe in obligation to help. And I've expressed that to some in the leadership at DOLA, as a former executive director of that department, of how can we help? How can I help? And we're going to continue to do that. So having said that, I think the governor is committed. He believes that, he sees a lot of nimbyism, you know, and we see it in our media all the time about people who want affordable X, but they don't want it in their backyard, right? We see in Denver, there isn't a large approach to do accessory drone units, but they'll do zoning overlays over individual neighborhoods and how controversial that is. As an example, and so that's also the kind of things I think that make an impact on the governor's thinking. But I believed, I believe now what I believed when we talked about 40 days ago, or I believe it was 125 days ago, what business, still a local control state. And it was bipartisan, opposition, not just the support, but the opposition of this sweeping bill. And I think that you as elected officials, when you attend CML or any kind of regional meetings, you know, to continue to engage stakeholders and members of both political parties at every level of state and local government and see if there is common ground. I believe there should be common ground for things like, how can we, what are best practices for intergovernmental agreements? Where do we, where can we agree we want to grow? What we want taxation to look like in that space? Should we share revenue, infrastructure investment, those types of things? And there are models that this bill would have wiped out, right? And it didn't matter if you're urban, suburban, or rural, it would wipe it out and give you a state solution if you didn't subscribe to that state statute. That's just bad policy. And it just is. And so we do have history on our side on how to do things right and how, what we can learn from the things that were done wrong even 30 years ago. And my hope is now that this legislature saw that and will listen more instead of talk more in the next session.
Do you have any questions?
No.
You know, I stayed connected with you through that whole process, and it was amazing just to see all the, everything that was happening. And it was kind of crazy. I looked at, because it was 107 pages or something like that, wasn't it? And I felt like it was too broad, first of all, too broad of a document in the first place. And they tried to get everything at the same time, and that doesn't typically work. And it didn't make sense. And it doesn't never make sense when you have something that's that broad. You know, and one thing that really enlightened me, about four weeks ago, Steve and I went up to Boulder, and all the building that is going on and right next to the highway, I mean, it's just, it's just exploding. And that's exactly what the, I guess, the Denver area that they're trying to do to guide every, all the, most of the building to the, real close to light rail. And going back several years, you know, his big emphasis has been to kind of reduce pollution, green energy, all that type of thing. So this all kind of fits within that, nicely, within that, his mindset. But the problem is, is we don't have a right light rail down here. So it doesn't fit. It doesn't fit. Even in Colorado, it's not fit. Colorado Springs right now is iffy. So it just does not fit. Out of curiosity, you mentioned that at some point in time in the future, that for the money from the state of Colorado not being able to appropriate all the money. How much money is still available out there? Do you have any idea?
On housing within the various agencies, I'm going to estimate to you around $600 million. So these are dollars we've never seen. Remember, 20 years ago, we fought for the state housing line to have just $1 in it to keep it from going away. And it has, I believe it has over $100 million in it now. And that is leveraged anywhere between $3 and $5 for every one of those dollars with federal match. So there's, money is not the issue. And I think to your question a minute ago, the governor is saying, I think, we've got truckloads of money, largely federal. What can we do to get through it all? And the Prop 123 initiative campaign really highlighted some, you know, the governor was hearing a lot, legislators are hearing a lot. If you remember that, that to be eligible for $123, you had to approve a building permit in 90 days. And everywhere I went, folks just burst out into laughter, saying, "Where in the world can you get a building permit in 90 days?" And so that's really what started in my mind, the conversation around the governor, saying, you know what, local governments are the problem. We can't get through their red tape, or they don't want what we have to offer, or they don't want certain elements in their backyard of economic and social classes. And so all of that came into line, into a perfect storm. And so the governor basically saw as an opportunity to, and members of his party. And it was interesting to see the difference between the House and the Senate. I was with a senator on day 119, a Democrat senator from the Ventura area, someone I've known for many years, absolutely love her dearly. And she got a text from one of the bill sponsors of Senate Bill 213 that says, "You're an elitist." Because she was opposed to that bill. And I think that tells you all that you need to know about the differences between urban and suburban in that case, and how we see the same issues differently. And this bill really needed some more stakeholder-ing. I did a call with the governor's office, and they had a planter, a planner from, a detail from CDOT to help the governor's policy shop kind of walk us through the bill. And I was pretty familiar with the bill, but I wanted to listen to what he said. And I said, "I have to just say to you, who in the world did you stakeholder this with?" And he says, "Well, we talked a lot with planners. We talked about that at lunch today." And as a recovering home builder lobbyist, I started to sweat, you know, about, well, you know, again, there is, and I respect planners and the role and the education they have, but you have to apply that to the environment on the ground, not just the actual land, but the political environment, the policy climate. actual land, but the political environment, the policy climate, and the economy that we find ourselves in. And that is where I thought a very large disconnect was occurring. And I was pretty confident at that point that that bill was going to die, to be honest with you, because they, their heart was in the right place and their mind was in the right place. It just wasn't where the votes were.
I'll make two final comments on that. One is that, you know, and that's why I asked what the dollar amount available is out there, you said around 600 million dollars. And one of the things that you've seen and I've seen in the last seven and a half years that I've been on this seat, is just the complexity of applying for money. And I think if they were to simplify the complexity of applying for money, they could expend this money and don't put so damn many roadblocks. They put roadblock after roadblock after roadblock. So I really believe that that's where they really need to go through, going to expend this money and not have to send it back. The other question, the other thing I was going to mention is this bill itself. I really, it challenged our reasoning for being a home rule community. Because it took away, it would have taken away a lot of the reasons for being home rule. Because it took our ability away to manage our own communities. And I think that was wrong.
So let me say this, and you've all heard me say, I didn't go to law school, but I do watch a lot of law on television and I will say this. There was no way some of those provisions are going to survive court scrutiny as it relates to home rule. I actually have city municipal attorneys, county attorneys calling me and say, please do not make any more changes to this bill, because we are so confident in our abilities to go to court, we don't want you to mess it up.
Were you one of them last?
Yeah, I was. No, I wasn't, but could it fly?
But he was channeling them.
Yeah, that's right.
And, and so, you know, I have, I talk to elected officials at the local level all the time and a lot of them are looking to move towards home rule after the last couple of years of the legislature in order to kind of establish a clear line about whether, what the state role is and what the local government role will be. I think in the next four to eight years, you're going to see a lot more towns go and cities go home rule and even counties. Pasco County has talked about it, for example. Several counties are talking about going home rule. So to join like a Broomfield or a Weld County, for example. And then I'll then finish responding to your statement by this about, we have an obligation to help DOLA. And I do think we should tell them, you've got to figure out a way to get through this. You've got to, whether it's us telling the governor no, or us telling the legislature, change this statute, we have an obligation to do that. We only have about another year and a half before some of these federal dollars start to revert back. And I do think that obligation, so we need to help DOLA help us, in my opinion. And I feel pretty strongly about that.
Just one question I wanted to ask you. You know, you were talking about this 90-day permit for building permit now. Is that, where does that come from? Where'd that set rule come? Is that for every community, the state, or what? Because you were saying that was an issue with the dollars.
Well, it started with the, in the campaign around Prop 123, that it said you were eligible for those dollars in communities where there was a 90-day, you could get a building permit within 90 days. So it's an artificial number, but that's kind of what started or was the spark to a lot of these conversations that we just concluded.
I mean, wouldn't it be, if there wasn't a limit, maybe 128, I mean, was that specifically set for 90?
I think that when someone comes in, not just to upzone a property, but to do something with their own property, the complaint has been for years that local governments are too slow and not responsive enough. And sometimes a whole economic cycle can go through. So in fairness to proponents of like Senate Bill 213, and they really wanted local governments to get out of the way or streamlining their processes in order to enable building the blank.
Well, I'll give you an answer to that. Getting money, give you a good example ourselves. We hired Michael Yearman, his organization, he came in and he helped us and we'll be finalizing that this next meeting that we have. And he streamlined some of the processes that we have. So if they didn't make, like I said, so complex, the ability to get money, then people could actually, or these communities can hire somebody like Michael to help them go through their process, to streamline it, make a lot of difference.
And that's exactly why we advocated for the 15 million for the things, those values that I described to you earlier. Give me tools. Give me the technical. And what I found when I was at DOLA, a lot of times that local governments needed the technical and financial support to do all those things. And I'm talking about outside the metro area. And they needed that help and they appreciated it. Many times, we hired contractor, contract city or county managers, contract city, contract county human services directors or planning directors to fill in those voids until they were able to get up on their own, for whatever reason that drove them to that situation. We need more of that and less of 213.
What other bills that you saw that sort of concerned?
Please. And I'm sorry, I can't repeat what you said specifically, but you said, I believe, we need to help you help DOLA. What specific help is that that we could do? I mean, is there anything tangible that we can actually do? Yes, we should say to the leadership at Local Affairs, what help do you need with the governor to say, we need to do A, B, or C differently? What statutes are in your way to make it easier to have dollars flow to local governments the way they were intended? Whether it's a long existing statutory program like Severance and Mineral Impact, or Gaming, or whatever it is, to the new statutes they passed over the last few years? I just believe they were largely drafted by folks who are not experienced in this space and are having a hard time. And I, when I went to work at DOLA, I said, it was, you know, it was the joke I use, I'm like, how hard could it be to give away money? It turns out it's really, really hard. And we've made it worse with some of these statutory constructions we've created. So that's what my point was.
And I think it sounds like some of this, if anybody's going to get active in that, should be done shortly, probably with DOLA rather than wait till the session starts up.
And recognize that DOLA isn't a bad spot. They work, they follow the law set by the legislature and they work for a governor. But we do, I just think we should say to them, both as a city here or CML, CCI, how can we help? What can we do? What hurdles do you have in the Division of Local Government, for example, to get through A, B, and C, or in the Division of Housing? We have an obligation, in my opinion, to do that. So we're going to write you up a summary. I came down earlier than I normally do, but I knew that this bill was front and center. You know, a year ago, they passed eight out of 10 bills. This year, they passed 78% of the bills they introduced, so the 611. The governor, I was just getting notes, the governor has until around the 5th of June to deal with about 250 of those bills. He's signing bills even today. We'll have a full summary of all of these by policy area that complement what you'll get from CML. And we're happy to come down here and talk about any of those bills related. We did, up to the end of session was also punctuated, very large controversial conversation around property tax. And we talked about that in the, in the fall, if I remember right. I forecasted for you, if you were upset about the 10 cent a bag fee, you're going to be taking your property tax bill. And it's very rare that I'm proven right, but I actually in this case was right. And holy cow. And so we've got a few different bills that related to property tax. We'll come back and talk about when the governor signs them and we have some more clarity on what your voters and your constituents will see in their ballots in November. Sir?
I have a question. Could I ask you about this new proposition on the ballot that may take away the Tabor tax?
So Prop HH is this property tax bill that we're talking about? And let me generically say, I'm happy to come back, but let me generically say that a couple of years ago, the legislature saw what was going on with property tax and decided to allow under Tabor to lower that assessed percentage of your overall value. So you were going to pay less in property, less of an increase. And they decided to do that over a couple of year period. And because the budget was such, they were able then to go back and backfill like school districts, relying on property taxes. So they backfilled school districts at 100% and some districts at 65%, like a city and a county, for example. And they made a decision, the legislature did, to not do that again for another couple of years, but to instead say, you know, maybe what we could do is go to the voters and say, we've got a large Tabor surplus that we owe the voters. Let's ask them if we can keep a part of that and apply that towards the increase in their property tax bill. And we'll lower that amount from 7.1% of the, so when you look at your, let's say your property tax went up $100,000, the value. They're going to discount under this proposal, the first $50,000 of that value, they'll discount it $50,000. And then instead of paying 7.1% increase in that value, you'll be paying 6.7%, if I remember right. So they tried to lower that and then they're going to backfill that again with the Tabor surplus, instead of taking out of the general fund. And so the fact that I had to explain it that way for three minutes means that the yard signs are going to be really hard to read, right? When you run a campaign around this, because it's, because you're going to see, you're going to see a campaign that says, we're giving you the property tax relief. But when you get into the blue book, in fact, I said to the governor's policy personally, I said, my dad's going to read this and it's going to lose his mind. He's going to lose his mind. And then they decided at the end of legislature that to sweeten the pot, under this property tax, they knew they had troubles, they backfilled 100% like hospital districts and fire districts. And they introduced another bill that said, we will do another Tabor refund of about, I'm going to say $2.3 billion. And we'll do it like the governor did last year, where they called it the Colorado, great Colorado Give Back. Instead of your constitutionally required Tabor refund, they're going to do it again and they're going to do it in similar fashions, except not in a tier by income of what you paid, but you know, I think it's $625 for a single filer and $1,325 for a joint filer. Very similar, a little bit less than what we got last year. I think that's just going to absolutely confuse the voters. And I don't very often agree with Kyle Clark at 9 News, but he ran a piece that said, I wonder if the legislature and others still were, that were really stupid. And so I, why, I believe this has been made harder than it needs to be. If HH were to fail in November, then the legislature, my forecast for you, will come back in November, December and do another two-year or so period reduction in property tax. And let me just be clear in my frustration on this policy. The same folks that brought us the Gallagher repeal, right? The Colorado concern, the big corporate and some philanthropic rich folks in town that brought us the Gallagher repeal are also for HH as well. And Gallagher, for whatever good or bad, Gallagher was a protection, it was like a firewall to these skyrocketing increases. And if, with Gallagher, you wouldn't have needed this latest Prop HH. And now Dennis Gallagher, who was a friend of mine, will now believe I said a good thing about the Gallagher amendment, so it's too bad he's no longer with us to see it. But it was a protection. And I find it completely ironic that the folks that repealed it were then standing with the governor in that press conference for this. And I think the voters are going to be so confused, and that's what makes me the most angry about this policy space. But Colorado voters are smart. I think they'll figure it out and we'll do whatever they say, obviously.
Well, Mike, you know, I guess wait till all the bills are signed and maybe concentrate on the bills that you know that would affect rural areas and then probably bring you back to give some more explanation on them.
Happy to do it.
All right.
And if DOLA's got extra money, that will take, you don't have to send any back to the government, we'll take whatever.
I know you worked extremely hard on it. What would my kids do, right? So that's, you know, you should offer to spend it.
I know that you worked extremely hard on this, on this session, especially on 213. Thank you.
Thank you. It was good to see you all in person.
Sorry, I just like.
That's all right.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you all. Have a good night.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you.
All right. Let's go on with item four, the Karen Wolf, Landscaping Project Commander, project coordinator.
Here you go.
She's having a meeting with her board.
Karen's right here.
So she's trying to.
Are you sure? I have pictures and I'm going to take it for 10 minutes down to five and a half.
Okay.
Nice. That'd be a first.
Yeah.
And I have pictures.
Could you go from 10 minutes to say an hour and a half?
Oh, sure. And a lecture in there and tell you about my background and my education and where I've worked. Not going to do that.
Are you going to cover both areas? Because we have you down for.
I've made one presentation area.
Okay.
Take them by.
Anywhere it is.
Before you get started.
Yes, Karen.
I just want counsel to know you did a fantastic job at the Water Festival 30.
Oh, thank you.
It was a Thursday.
Thursday.
She was on it.
I actually heard that.
Didn't rain on those kids.
Really? Where's the full screen on this?
Don't change the subject.
Right there?
Yeah.
Yes, thank you, Karen.
Perfect.
Okay. It's not on there.
No, it's on these.
It's only on that one.
It's on ours.
It's on ours.
This is only important, right? You, we don't.
Well, you got one. I didn't know you would have that on that summary. Okay, what are we doing? I'm talking about Tree City USA briefly, tree activities and then tree questions, but you can hold off on those until I get all the way through with the dirt work. Okay?
It doesn't work.
Down there. So the purpose of this presentation is to update you on what I've been doing literally in the dirt. So not lovely, you know, trail programs like we did in grad school. All right, anyway, so this is so you can go out and tell people why we're cutting trees down in case someone yells at you, okay? But I also wanted you to know what Tree City USA is. So since I was in the, was in the planning department in 2012, we finally got a tree board and I helped facilitate it. And we have to maintain four requirements, maintaining a tree board, having a community tree ordinance, spending at least $2 per capita on urban forestry and celebrating arboraging. And we do all those things and we've done them almost pretty consistently for about 10 of the last 13, 12 years. Okay? So we are planting trees. All right. We got grant funding, just a little bit of money from the Colorado Tree Coalition. They even gave us these neat little cards. Everybody gets one. So we use those cedar street printings that are laminating and everything, so we didn't have to do that. So we've already planted three trees for this year. We did PR. Here's our first tree going into Los Ninos. Actually in December, because we needed to plant trees last year and we hadn't done that yet, and the weather was warm, we threw two willows in at Central Park by the lake. The one on the left, we planted yesterday. That's a Kit Carson. And then we planted another tree at Central. And they're all by the playgrounds. So we have a lot of tree issues. I wanted to throw that out there. If you ever have questions and you want me to come back and be as not long-winded as possible, I will do that. So problems we have, lights in the trees, there's some examples, the photos I took once a couple of years ago, tree topping that happened right across the street from my house in the circle, two great trees. And the tree person topped one of them. And that's in our ordinance to not top trees. We have a problem with roots. Roots go out typically, very few go down. In fact, a lot of species of trees lose their taproot over time. It just decays, they don't need it anymore. So that's something we have to deal with. Straight tree issues, what do we do? I threw this in there, I've tried those, those tree planters, they're at the Pocket Park in front of Dave Frank Images. Those little guys are still alive four years later.
Doing great.
And not everybody's a fan of trees and planters. That's okay, I'm going to keep putting them in planters if I'm allowed to. But there are things you can do with infrastructure. One thing is called the Silva cell. It's pretty heavy duty. If you already have infrastructure in the way. If you already have infrastructure in the way, it's probably not cost-effective at all. But it is a way to block tree roots from infrastructure, to contain soil better, to manage your drainage as well, and keep everything functioning together, including keeping the tree alive. I'm not promoting these. I'm just saying there are options out there. And I do cut down trees, so I'm not afraid to do that either. So here's an example at Lincoln Square in New York City. The silva cells going in, and they have these covers. And then they completely cover it after that. And these trees in this park, they were planted in 2009. And that's what they look like today. So if you can do a whole area and do it right... So that's a theme for the future of our Riverwalk plans. Okay, that brings me to invasive species. Siberian elm is a very, very common one we have all over. It's not on the state list yet. They don't have enough examples. I need to document what we have here, and we might actually get it listed as a seaweed. You guys got seaweed? You got books a couple of years ago, weed books? Right? Mike asked, Mike passed them out. Okay, so Siberian elm, people call it Chinese elm, major problem. Our other most common woody invasive is Russian olive. I took these today. That's one I missed, where we're working down on the river. So removal and treatment even has its challenges. This is called sawcut or stump cut treatment. And you cut the tree down, and you immediately paint it, the cuts with chemical. And then sometimes you have regrowth when it's not done very well. So that's Donna Albersen, who I work with, with Conservation District on weeds. And that's the one on the right is regrowth. All those little... So we have some of that to deal with in the Boulevard Edition. Okay, so why am I talking to you about Riverwalk? So when I came here in 2010, I got involved with trout habitat, with Trout Unlimited. I came to the planning department in 2012, helped write the grant to buy the Boulevard Edition and many other grants. So always half of my job was writing and implementing grants. So that's when we started to acquire the Boulevard Edition. And then I was also involved with invasive species, like with Gil Ramirez, who's in this photo, with Julie with the watershed, Donna, the Conservation District, Shelley used to be Forest Service. Oh, and me, yeah, okay. So that's my path where I ended up today. I worked at the museum, planning department here, watershed, and then left and came back two and a half years later, after working for the Department of Ag. And now I'm with Public Works. By choice, I want to be here. I do.
Are you telling yourself that?
I'm here to stay. I'm so sorry.
Sounds like internal monologue.
Exactly.
Yeah, so I dressed, and I said, "Five minutes," and I'm probably at six. Okay, so grant funding for some of these river projects. GOCO, which little background on GOCO. Started out under Department of Natural Resources, then went to what's called the lottery division under Department of Revenue, but the investments are made through Colorado Parks and Wildlife. I threw that in there because I was looking for a GOCO logo and couldn't find them in my documents. So I thought, "Wait, what's the history of GOCO? What does it fall under?" Colorado Youth Corps Association. We work with Mile High Youth Corps. And then we got a grant. Talitha and I wrote a grant with Colorado Division of Criminal Justice. That one was for about $90,000. We have 286 with Julie with the watershed. Four years ago, we got an extension, actually two extensions. COVID, rightfully so. So we still have some work to finish this year. So that funded Mile High Youth Corps. We've done a lot of work in the Boulevard Edition. It doesn't look like it, but this is what we're dealing with, okay? I have cut down hundreds of Russian olives and treated them with chemicals. And now I'm cutting down Siberian elms. We don't have very many tamarisk in town. We do, though. We have a few, but that's called salted ear. All right, so this map was for CDOT. I had to let them know where we were working. But I wanted you to see this, because if you haven't seen this, or you have, and you know, maybe the refresher helps. The red is city-owned property. We bought what was in city limits first, and the little bowtie going upstream, so down to the corner of the map, and then another section. So this is what we already own. And Franklin, you were asking about, you know, chimeno and ownership. And so it's good to start with what you already have.
Gotcha. Good idea.
I feel you. So anyway, we've worked in the red area, the yellow as well. That seed out, we have an agreement with them. I've also worked with the fire department and continue to do that. We have burn piles to do. Here's another outline of what we own down in the Boulevard. Okay, so Russian olive treatment, Siberian elm started in the Boulevard. Then we went downstream. Pedestrian bridge to the animus bridge, we cleaned this up on both sides. It looks bare. It's not bad. Most of what we cut down were Siberian elms, okay? And we did stump treatment. That was with the contractor, okay? That was this spring, and we're still moving downstream. And we go back to areas, too, when we see things regrowing. I've had youth corps in here as well. Next area, animus to cedar, both sides of the river. We cleaned up both sides, except for the very top left globe. McDonald's, we've got to deal with trash, and then all these little yucky black locusts.
What about that area there, Taco Bell? Have you done anything? It's kind of...
Yeah.
When I went through there, I was like, "It's kind of worried about that bank there." It's kind of, what, rivers getting kind of closer?
You can't see them.
There are those trees that are so... Just kind of curious about if we're doing anything in there.
Yeah, so we've been working heavily in here. And so when we go into an area, when I go into an area, the first thing I do is treat the invasives. Because if you don't, they're just going to grow back. And then you continue with your problem. So before even building a trail, the first thing we need to do is get rid of what's bad. Then we need to control what's native. So we've cleaned all this up and all this.
Yeah. Yeah. I didn't mean to interrupt you, but the only reason... If you clean all those trees out there by the Taco Bell area, the riverbank is kind of washing up. You're kind of taking away some of the riverbank, yeah. And I mean, are we going to plant something there?
So I have seeds. Yeah, we've ordered seeds for revegetation.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because that is pretty close there. Didn't really realize that until the other night I was going through there.
Yep, that's an excellent question. So we are doing revegetation. Here's another area, animus to cedar. You see Chimeno Park on the right. You see the social path. All along there were Siberian elms. So yes, it was holding in the bank a lot of weeds. But now we have visibility, and we don't have these trees that are going to ruin, you know, everything in their way. And we've cleaned up on the left side. But we're not done, so... And then cedar to commercial, this is across from Amtrak or below Amtrak. And then across the river, there's work going on. There was today.
What, you ended up... Are they taking out dirt over there by the Commercial Street Bridge? That area in there?
Yep, it's right here.
Oh, okay.
So what's happened, just like with the ditch issue down by the hotel, the Commercial Street Bridge, both sides, the bank has built up and built up and built up because of sediment. So the river's not following a path that's most effective for where the water should go when it's high. So it seems counterintuitive, but Gil Ramirez with watershed, you know, upstream, Water Department is working on this, Marv Vino, you know, other department heads Bob, et cetera. So that is literally lowering the bank. It's scary. It is. But that's all sediment that has built up over decades. And then we have to reseed it. So and what we'll receive with are native, you know, grasses, flowers, and shrubs. See what happens. And that's something I just have to stay on top of. This is a very challenging area, commercial to land in. This is my last picture. So and on the north side, it's all private. Well, almost all private, except for the upper right-hand one.
Is that unknown?
It is.
Well, I told Keely the other day, I'm like, "Can we buy this, Steve?" The parts right there.
Ask these people.
Can I see some more right here? Jazz bought some more, but there is an unknown ownership. Actually, there is an owner listed on the...
Here.
Okay, sorry if I went too long.
No, you can.
No, you did great, Karen. And I do want to thank Karen for all her hard work. The river's looking a lot better. She's really getting in there. It's so helpful.
Well, you know, the whole thing is that we want to make it more pleasing for locals as well, as people come into town and make it where people don't feel like they're afraid to walk through that area.
Well, and this is an example of before and after. There's big Russian olives, and they're no longer there.
Yeah.
But now we have to go ahead, and there's different strategies for dealing with willows. So and we clean up homeless camps, and we warn them. They go back, and we go back.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
I have, there's a woman who has moved here from the Denver area who loves the concept of creating carved trees around town and all the dead Siberian elms is what I'm presuming that she's talking about. Is it a problem to do that with those trees? Or will that not effectively keep them from spreading?
If they're killed properly, we had a problem down here below the flags about 10 years ago, and they grew back because they weren't treated, and they were very strong. So you have to make sure your tree is dead. And then you know what we're going through with Shayla, getting her tree done. So I think that's probably something that could go through Arts and Culture Commission first and decide where they are. You know, it's something that could be classy.
Yeah. I just wondered if it's something that the tree board would have any concern about. That being...
No, we just need to make sure that things are dead. They're going to be...
Dead! I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
You know, this kind of fits in with what the Greenway Foundation was talking about. Kind of the beginning of a low-hanging fruit to make things look better. It's a good place to start.
I wanted to say, Karen, thank you for everything you're doing. It's an incredible amount of work. I did have a question. What, I can't describe it better. What is that? Like, it seems like live stem. It's a red, red live stem, and then it's got leaves about that long in there, like right-shaped. There's a lot of it around the river. Is that an invasive species?
How tall?
I don't know about this, tall to the floor?
Red stem, that might be a little Russian olive regrowth.
Okay.
Or new shoots.
Would be invasive. Okay, I was just curious.
Still, if the leaves are silver, I should have left my presentation. I would have gone back to that slide.
I'm not good at identifying plants. I can maybe talk to you after, too.
Okay.
But I was going to ask you two things. I have to be honest. I didn't know that topping a tree was against our ordinances here, code. But how can we help that be made more, known more publicly? Because it seems a lot of trees really just perpetually get that broccoli look, and it's terrible.
That's why, yeah. And you shorten the life of the tree.
It significantly, I'm sure. But I mean, how can we help that be more publicly known?
Well, one of the things we did a couple of years ago, we added noxious weeds more specifically to our ordinance, so that put out a little bit of the information. We put a flyer about Myrtle Spurge in utility bills. That only goes out to about 4,000 people, because a lot of people don't get a physical bill in the mail. But that was a way to reach out. I added a vegetation page to our website with Desiz's help. So I mentioned things like Myrtle Spurge. That's a list A species. That's all in Chapter 19 of our code. So education, that's why we did tree planting events.
So I guess...
Workshops, coordinating with people like we already coordinate with, the watershed, the Trinidad Trails Alliance.
People that do that work locally, have they been reached out to directly and say, "You can't do that"? I mean, because to me, that guy's in a boom truck. That's a professional doing that.
Yeah.
Do we have... Do you require a permit to cut trees?
No.
And you can, a lot of cities do.
That might be something to look into.
A tree permit. Plant or and/or deal with, how you deal with your neighbor?
It would be great, because I mean, like, you know, if you lose a tree, it's a big loss, especially a nice mature tree. Then I did want to ask one more question, if I may. And this is off the subject somewhat, I guess. Why, what's going on with so many evergreens around Trinidad that are dying? I mean, it seems like a real, over the last couple of years...
Infestations. We planted a blue spruce out here, and it died. We planted it to replace the white fir that's sick. And it's infested. And it's been infested for years.
A bug, I'm sure?
Yeah, there's different ones. Spruce beetle, we've had beetle kill. There's all kinds of ipps, beetles, beetles specific to certain species.
I mean, all those, Park Street, the college had those really nice trees. And, you know, across from Park Street, the school, and those have all died in this basically two years. I mean, and then it's just prolific, it seems.
And it takes a long time for trees to die normally. Sometimes there's some major shock to a tree. But pollution, you know, from the streets, the chemicals we put down for snow removal, you know, even Chimeno has a tree at one of his houses that's dying because they kept putting salt on the sidewalk and the stairs.
Yeah, pollution seems to be a problem because they went empty store on the last Saturday. And I noticed up in Stonewall, they've stonewalled a lot of the pine trees. They're right along the road, they're dying.
And so we also have a drought cycle. And so that further stresses trees and makes them more susceptible to infestation. And the bugs bring in other things. They're a vector for pathogens like fungus.
Sure.
Any other questions, Mark? Thank you, Karen.
Thanks, Karen.
You look to go to work and look forward to it.
I have to go meet with...
Yeah, go meet with your...
Looking for a little solid...
I won't be there, Karen.
I wonder why. Can you approve my three marijuana items? Like, right now?
Okay. No lobbying.
Trees? Oh, sorry. Planters?
Okay, on item six, first quarter marijuana allocations. Cheryl, there she is. Oh, where are you going?
She's so timely.
All righty, so in your packet, you should have received the department requests. You can see that marijuana is dwindling quite a bit. We only had $170,000 available for staff request allocations. One that wasn't in the packet was the golf course feasibility study. It is in your packet now, but here's the hard copy. You can count it to when we're finished. But our staff, most of the staff's here with, if you have any questions regarding the requests. But one of the, what I'd like to highlight is that there's two items on there that we don't have enough funding for, but that we want to put away what's remaining for one of the public works vehicles. The public works vehicles, we probably need $100,000 and we only have $25,000. So hopefully we can earmark something for second quarter marijuana, figure out how we can get to those goals. Same thing for the fire department vehicle, we don't have any to put away for chief's vehicle. But just so that you're aware, that's what we're, we are planning to do. Are there any questions?
Any questions on any of the items?
So the feasibility study is on, is that what we're putting in a request for proposal?
Yeah, we have already received the proposals. So this would be the funding mechanism for contracting with that entity.
Are the proposals within that 20?
They absolutely are. We're expecting it to be lower than that $20,000.
I have a question. So, and I posed this question several years ago when I got on council. But we started replacing city vehicles when I first started in 2018. So my question is, I always thought we had a mechanism in place to keep the money in a specific account so we wouldn't have to replace these vehicles with marijuana money.
So we do, we normally budget $500,000 every year for fleet.
Okay.
And because our taxes tanked, we dropped that to 200,000 last year. That was one of the areas that we saw that we could cut, possibly using marijuana to backfill.
Okay, so we're cutting both, okay.
And plus, if I may add, vehicles have gotten ridiculously expensive as well. So we're doing a lot less bang for our buck. And there's been multiple instances where we've had a vehicle on order for over a year and leave and still haven't gotten them. So it's a real challenge right now. Meanwhile, we have some vehicles that are aging.
So the fire department vehicle, we're asking for 50, we need 55, is that for the chief's vehicle?
Yes.
What year is that?
That one's a 2024, we missed the 2023 cycle. But that would be a 2024.
Oh, I was meaning the vehicle we have now.
The one I have now, I think it's like a 2014. It's a good vehicle, it just doesn't work for, for what I do.
It doesn't have tech, high tech?
No, I don't even need high tech, I just need to be able to get off road. I need to like have room for tools. I kind of do my job a little different. It's all wheel drive, but it's so low to the ground. I mean, getting off in the weeds in a wild wildfire. Plus, I'm kind of a work in chief, I don't just sit in my car and watch things.
I understand.
Wouldn't a truck be better?
A truck would be, and that's what I'm trying.
We have such a big, I can.
Yeah.
Okay.
We have a question, dump trucks up if.
I know, but it just won't go faster.
Any other questions?
So the council's aware, we are most likely going to order the two public work vehicles and the fire department vehicle because of the backlog. So it's taking so long for these vehicles to come in. We're going to get them on order. We're thinking late fall that they will come in and by that time, second quarter and maybe third quarter might cover the costs.
So Cheryl, when we have, so say we order these vehicles, so that's going to be an expense that's set. So does that expense have precedence over some of the other things that we have listed? I mean, for instance, so we ordered the chief's vehicle. So we know it's an expense we're going to eventually, we're going to have to address this year. So would that come up in a priority situation or?
I think that yes, we are earmarking these two, three vehicles. So that second quarter probably is going to get first dibs. Of course, after Noah's Ark and creative district.
Okay. So next question I have, I see what we're giving to nonprofits, that 1% is pretty low.
It's low.
Do we need to consider not even doing that anymore? I mean, $2,600 is not.
Well, you've got to figure though that, you know, that's over a period of four or five. So it's roughly $10,000 over the course of the year.
That's still not, that was.
It's not a lot, but at least it's something to give back to the community.
Are we still, are people still asking for money for the nonprofits through that?
I'm not sure.
I spoke to one of their board members and he said that the requests are still pretty strong.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
You know, the question I have is like, you know, we're trying to find money. First of all, any other questions besides?
No.
No, good. How much money do we have in the rainy day fund right now?
I would say close to a million. We moved up a lot when we were committing funds. So with, I think the commitment for, darn, I didn't bring that.
What I'm getting at here is that, let's say that, you know, we want to order these other vehicles, these vehicles for the fire department and the public works. And let's say some of this stuff begins to not pan out the way we think it's going to, probably will. But maybe, maybe take some of those for reserve funds.
We definitely could do that.
Reserve funds and buy these, buy this equipment.
And I do remember what we dipped into rainy day funds. It was for the $2 million economic development. We dipped into that to cover that new fund. Yes, we absolutely could use that.
For the rainy day fund is that so that, you know, when things like this do come up, at least we'll have something to plan B.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
What, okay, so if we took the $2 million from the rainy day fund to do the housing initiative, what are we doing with the incentive money?
Oh, well, now the incentive money is being transferred into the economic development fund. Previously it was just, so there was also an economic development reserve fund in the general fund. And that money was, the 4% was being dumped into that reserve line item. And I can't remember, I think that fund might have had maybe a million dollars. And that also includes the money when we took over for the chamber. I don't remember that with, do you remember how we did that? And we had some land, no, it's not the land though. Whatever the chamber's banking account was, we transferred it to the city because we took over economic development. So it includes that money. And then the 4% that we've been putting away, and I want to say it had about 100, or I mean, $1 million. So we moved that to the economic development fund and then the remainder came from rainy day fund. And now anything in the 4% automatically goes to the economic development fund.
You know, what we could do even is like, my suggestion is that maybe we could do a little bit from the rainy day fund and a little bit for maybe the incoming monies for the next little quarters, kind of balance itself out so we don't deplete the rainy day fund so much, but take away some of it. So I think just it could balance itself out so we can get this equipment. Any other questions?
No questions.
This is the first time we pretty much told staff, no, that's, that's, I mean, it's a good thing and it's a bad thing, but every time staff would bring forward the requests, like, okay, let's fit it in, it works. And now, now we're starting to turn with the requests away.
I do have a question for you, chief. There's a, on the fire department structural engine equipment, I think in your request, and you got $20,000 and you said that's a beginning.
Right, and I've been coming to you, we're trying to outfit all the engines with the right equipment. Remember, I have those two engines that don't have equipment. This is just piece filming it a little bit at a time.
So how much would you say you would need?
We're getting close.
Are you?
Yeah. And after this comes in, I got some wildland equipment to buy for that new truck that's coming in. Cause we'll have to fit that all with hoses and nozzles. But all of the structural stuff, I think we're pretty close on. So I shouldn't be begging for more money after a while.
And then the only other thing is, you know, that turnout gear dryer.
Yes, sir.
You were saying that you've not been able to supply the fire people, the people in the fire department with another set of clothes?
Correct, and if you remember, I gave you about our cancer issues a couple of years ago, right?
Yeah.
So what we try to do is after a fire, we do a gross decon on scene. Then we come back to the station and throw our gear in the washing machine. But if they're still on duty and we have another fire, we have another call, they can't. So those guys are actually leaving their gear dirty until the time they can get off of shift and then we wash it that way. With this gear dryer, we should be able to turn them around in about two hours.
So what is, what is, what is the cost of a uniform?
So just pants and a jacket right now is over $3,000. And then boots are 350, a helmet $600, and gloves are 150. And then your hood's 150 because it's a particulate.
You're looking about $3,000 per.
So you're looking, you know, anywhere, probably close to 4,500, $5,000 just to outfit one set.
Okay, how many, how many firefighters do you have?
16. And 17 with me, but they don't let me get too dirty anymore, but I'm trying.
So you can decontaminate all of the uniforms?
We try to gross decon out there on scene, which is a hose will wash all the big debris off. And then we separate our gear from an inner liner and the outer liner when we get back and throw it in that washer that we got on that grant that one time. So, but then it just hangs around the station.
So your mannequin is missing limbs.
My poor mannequin is like 20 years old. He's been burned and crushed and.
You can learn a lot from him.
Yeah. A poor guy, he's beat up, so.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions on the allocation?
No.
Okay. Well, the time is now 5:30 now, we conclude the work session. Thank you everyone. But this is a good discussion.